Good evening and welcome to the first council meeting of February 2021. Will you just give us one more minute? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for February 2021. The meeting is hereby called to order. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag, followed by a moment of silence. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The moment of silence was for the 465,000 people in America who have died from COVID and related disease, 683 in Ventura County, and about 10% of that, 69 persons, in the city of Thousand Oaks since the pandemic started. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Here.
Mayor Bill de la Peña.
Present. Thank you. We don't have any requests for a continuance or a public hearing or agenda item. Thank you. So we will now continue with our special presentations this evening. First, we will have our city manager, Andrew Powers, with an update on COVID-19. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bill de la Peña. My pleasure to be with you this evening. Wanted to give you just a very, very brief update on COVID tonight and focus that update on vaccinations. As I'm sure some have heard and word will continue to spread, the county did loosen up eligibility for vaccinations today to those that were 65 and older. Again, those that are 65 and older. So vaccination appointments were made available starting this morning. There was availability throughout the week for this week on appointments based on a number of reports that we've received. Just about 100,000 doses have been administered as of yesterday in the county, and of those, 62,000 to 25 first doses and 12,000 or so appointments. About 19,000 of those are second doses. So continuing a lot of hard work. I know I've heard from a number of folks in the community with their stories of going through and getting their first doses and shots. This is really heartening because it's going to be the piece that helps us move forward, helps support our businesses, and continues us down the path to recovery. There is concern out there at the county level about the strength of variants that I'm sure many of you have read about in the news. It's not widespread here locally yet, but there is some concern around that which just really makes it that much more important to move through the vaccination process. And it seems like the availability of doses is improving, and we're going to continue to work hard to support the county's efforts there. We do have some of our employees, disaster services workers, that are providing logistical support at vaccination sites, and we continue to make offer of folks that are in need of, that are eligible to assist if the county has additional needs out there. That concludes my update. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Do council members have any questions for Mr. Powers at this time? None? Thank you. We will then go to our second special presentation, and I welcome Christopher Moore, the local government liaison from the California Public Utilities Commission, and he's going to give us an update on resources available to local agencies. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Hi, good evening. I'll get my video started. Hi, good evening. Thanks a lot for having me tonight. My name is Christopher Moore. I'm the California Public Utility Commission's assigned liaison for the Central Coast and Santa Monica Mountains. I've been in this position for approximately three years, and the goal of this very short presentation is to make sure that the council is aware how I can be a resource. As you may be aware, the CPUC oversees utility services in our state and is responsible to ensure that the over $50 billion in services that Californians use is provided in a safe, reliable, and affordable manner. I've seen in my time at the position that Thousand Oaks gets the affordable part like no other city I've worked with. This is particularly when it comes to water rates. When I first took the job, I dropped my card off at a number of city halls, and only one did I find myself in an impromptu 45-minute meeting with the Public Works Director. If Jay Spurgeon's knowledge and dedication continues with the staff in the Public Works Department, there's probably not much more I can do to help with water rate cases, though I am more than happy to help with any transition. That said, there are some areas where I've been hearing from your neighboring jurisdictions and not from Thousand Oaks. The first concerns relatively routine customer issues such as cell tower outages, repeated interruption to internet services. It's possible that your constituents are smart enough to resolve these with the utilities or take them to our Consumer Affairs Branch, which is the proper protocol, but it never hurts to CC me, particularly if there are many residents experiencing similar issues. Perhaps more notable, and some big issues that I'm hearing from neighboring jurisdictions and not from Thousand Oaks are in regards to Southern California Edison's public safety power shut-off policy and their vegetation management practices. If these are not issues of concern, great, but otherwise, I'm more than happy to follow up with your staff and see how I might be able to assist. Of course, there are a lot of issues that we regulate that may be of interest that, I mean, we can, I understand you've got a lot on your, a very full schedule, so we can't handle those today. So, you know, I can come back at any time, discuss with your staff, or give a more thorough presentation to the full council. So I'd just be interested if you have any questions for me, if there's any particular topics or concern that should be on my radar, so I know to include your staff. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I do have a question. In Thousand Oaks, we, of course, have had power outages as well, and not sure whether you can speak to the PSPs with Southern California Edison.
There have definitely, there, yeah. So the PSPs, there are a number of things which lead to PSP. You know, there are a number of, there are a number of things that can lead to an outage besides a PSP, and that actually has been one of the ongoing issues with Edison, is that it's not always clearly communicated when something is a PSP and when something isn't. We had a hearing just two weeks ago. In many ways, Edison has become something of the problem child when it comes to PSP. Back in 2019, PG&E was, and it's very clear the commissioners and CalOES and others are very unhappy with how SCE is doing in terms of notifying people. I know that Simi Valley and Moore Park have been experiencing a lot of PSPs, often with minimal notification, and they've written us letters. And I believe they're becoming parties of proceeding. There's also some organizing going on from Aguadolce, which includes parts of Ventura County, and they're looking to actually monitor every single SCE PSP and submit comments about how SCE did and whether it was in fact necessary. They're actually looking this at their own monitoring stations as well.
Mr. Moore, we have a question from council member Mayor Protem Bob Engler.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. PSPs, of course, are, they affect our citizens as much as any neighboring city. We are in a wind zone, so to speak, and recently, we did have a PSP that was quite extensive and lasted for quite a while in different neighborhoods. If some of our citizens have complaints about that or how those PSPs is rolled out, is there a, can you share with us a number or a website to go to to share their comments?
I can follow up and share with that. Every single SCE PSP is actually noticed and submitted to us, and there's an example, there is a time period for comment on those PSPs.
I think Mayor Protem Engler was wondering whether there is an email address or a phone number where residents can call or write to?
Yeah, you can always call or write to our public advisor as well. Let me get the, let me get the, pull that, pull that up right now.
Thank you.
I didn't want to share your particular number if you had a better number for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, not your personal cell number, of course, no.
Yeah. So the public advisor for the CPUC can be reached at 1-866-849-8390. And then their email address is public advising@cpuc.ca.gov. And all those, all those comments are logged and shared with the commissioners.
CPUC?
Yeah.
Dot ca?
Dot ca.
Dot gov. Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
We can try to put that on the screen maybe later on. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other questions?
I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, this is council member McNamie. When I spent some time years ago in the People's Republic of China, there was frequent power outages just simply because their system there was not as sophisticated as what we have here in the United States. Now, when I am here in the United States, last several years, we've had more and more power outages which was reminiscent of a third world country at the time, People's Republic of China. What is contributing to all these power outages, in your opinion?
The public safety power shut-offs has to do with the change in wildfire activity. So, and that's, the authority to shut off power lines in the case of imminent threat to property and public health is an authority that the utilities have, and they are now exercising it. We are exercising oversight of them to try to minimize this, but ultimately, the utilities are making those decisions to deactivate power lines in order to try to protect public safety. Now, of course, there are the rolling blackouts that happened last August. There's been a lot of criticism of our agency as well as the independent system operator in terms of, you know, how that, how planning failed in those cases. There's a lot, there's currently a lot of planning to try to make sure that doesn't happen this next, this next cycle. There's a full root cause analysis. I could come back to talk about that at some point. It basically came to is that the current procedures in place did not anticipate a large, you know, the amount of heat all across the West at the same period of time, along with intermittent generation such as renewables not being, not being able to fill the gap. So that's, that's very much a current issue and one that we're working to avoid in the future.
Let me share an observation for you. As I'm driving through the streets of Thousand Oaks when we had the high winds, I noticed quite a few power lines were down because tree branches fell onto the power lines, disrupting the supply. I don't remember this happening 10, 20 years ago. Has Southern California Edison discontinued or modified how they're clearing the power lines of tree branches to be proactive to avoid this from happening when we do have high winds?
They are putting significant effort into wildfire mitigation, which includes a vegetation management program. Usually, we, a lot, in fact, they're being so aggressive in the Santa Monica Mountains. We hear a lot on the other side that people feel like, feel that they're being too aggressive. So there's a very, it's, it's a difficult balancing act in terms of, you know, that they're playing out, and we're trying to, we're very much in the middle in trying to moderate that discussion between ratepayers and the utility. But SCE is certainly putting a lot of, a lot of time and resources into vegetation management and wildfire mitigation.
As I share with you the following. 20 years ago, I was speaking to a U.S. Forest Ranger, and he prolifically expected and saw the future of future wildfires in California by telling me how policy had changed in Sacramento regarding the U.S. Forest Service going into vegetation that was dead in the forest, and they used to clean it out to reduce the brush fire possibility. They used to go in and cut down trees to increase the health of the forest and remove the dead trees as well as those that were overgrowth, so that way, when fire does occur, they would be able to manage it better. He spoke of how underneath power lines, like Southern California Edison, there used to be teams that would go in and clear out the brush underneath those power lines, so in the case a line does come down, that it doesn't fall on anything that would ignite until power utilities are able to be put back online again. He told me how it used to be that Southern California Edison, as well as other power companies, used to go in and inspect the connections on the power terminals to evaluate if they need to be repaired or not, or if their potential of coming down in the case of power outages or any surges, things of that nature. And he said that Sacramento has tied the hands of the Forest Ranger from going in and clearing dead brush, trimming out the forests. Policy hasn't changed, but in 20 years, he was spot-on correct, because all the things that the U.S. Forest Rangers did has been discontinued, and his prediction of fire, forest fires has come to fruition. Were we with Public Utilities Commission, working with Sacramento, because the environmentalists at that time 20 years ago said, "Allow nature to do what nature does." Well, when there's overgrowth in the forests, nature has fires to return the carbon back into the soil, allow seed pods to open to create more foliage to allow trees to grow. My challenge is that seems like public policy out of Sacramento restricting the ability of the Forest Rangers to go in and do what they do best to manage our forests has been tied, causing much of what we have. What is the PUC's position on the Forest Rangers comment 20 years ago to predict what we have today and a change of policy in Sacramento and tying the hands of the Rangers?
I mean, so CPUC has no jurisdiction over forest management, so I really, I really can't speak to that issue. We've, the wildfire mitigation plans are our vehicle to try to improve management, and they include, you know, vegetation management is a major piece of those. They're also a risk-based tool, so we look every year to improve how, how the various practices in the plan are, to benchmark them across, against other plans, and overall, improve the management by the utilities and reduce risk. Vegetation management is a very, is a very significant piece of that puzzle.
Is there any control that PUC has under the power lines that come down and clearing of the vegetation underneath that the California Youth Corps and so forth used to get jobs going out doing such clearance? Is that under the purview of the PUC to encourage that to take place?
Well, Edison, we have the rules regarding the right of way. We have the General Order 95, which dictates vegetation management and minimum clearances that must be maintained by Southern California Edison and the other investor-owned utilities. So that's, that's been long, you know, longstanding practices to have those minimums, and that, that hasn't changed. Most of the utilities go beyond those minimums and are going much beyond those minimums under the purview of the wildfire mitigation plans. But those are, those are utility right-of-ways, and the utilities have, as long as they maintain the minimums that we mandate, as well as keep consistent with their wildfire mitigation plans, you know, we, we, we leave them to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now go on to public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. 11 individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Stephanie Belding, joining us via video, followed by Ryan Palmer and Patrick Duras. Good evening, Ms. Belding.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña and city council members and staff. Thank you so very much. My name is Stephanie Belding. I am tonight representing the Council on Aging. I'm the vice chair of Council on Aging, and I do live in Thousand Oaks. Our much-awaited survey, you know, we're, I've been working as a city on the Senior Adult Master Plan, and the survey is wonderfully up and active now. This really presents a rarity of opportunity for our community members. This is a survey not to benefit some corporate entity or, you know, increase profits for someone else, but to really help you, to really be sure that we gather information to ensure that you or someone that you care for will benefit. to ensure that you or someone that you care for will benefit. Most of my senior friends and acquaintances are absolutely not shy about expressing their opinions, and so I'm asking you to please jump into the survey. Anyone watching tonight, we do have, there are informations available in the Thousand Oaks Acorn, and in the TO Star, and online, and at the library websites, and at our Council on Aging social media pages. You can access the survey at www.toaks.org/seniors. That's www.toaks.org/seniors. Or you could call 805-381-7362 to get more information or to get a paper copy of the survey. Because obviously, accessing that online is an electronic version of the survey. And if you're unaware of many services available to you in the city, this survey, just taking the survey itself, is a great way to learn about the specific services and programs. And we have also included phone numbers on that survey and websites for people to be able to contact if they spot an item on the survey that, that they could use. So, I'm also asking everyone age 55 and over to please take the survey. If you are not currently using a number of senior services, maybe you want to be sure that those services will be around, or new ones that you'd like to see implemented within the city in the next 10 years. The, the action taken on this survey will actually last more than a decade, and it is important that if you live in the Canejo Valley, if you are caring for a senior person but not 55 years of age, that would also be another reason to please take the survey. I'm urging you to make your voice heard, so that we can keep Thousand Oaks a vital, livable community for all ages. And again, the survey is at www.toaks.org/seniors, or call 805-381-7362, and you can even print out the survey. Just be sure you click on the "Away to Print Out the Survey" before you actually submit your final question. And that's another wonderful way to keep a record of all the phone numbers and services that are around. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. I hope everybody took notes. Next up, we have Ryan Palmer, followed by Patrick DeRoz, joining us via video. Good evening.
Hi, so my name is Ryan Palmer. I am 26 years old, and I've lived in Thousand Oaks my entire life. I'm speaking today to express my resentments towards the statements made by Councilmembers Ed Jones and supported by a mission by Mayor Claudia Bill de la Peña regarding renters and the idea of two societies being created in Thousand Oaks. While I understand that Ed Jones didn't necessarily mean any disrespect toward renters, his statements came across as out of touch and unfounded. While I may not describe myself as someone who has huge involvement in civic affairs, I'm someone who likes to stay informed. I am also registered to vote, and I am also a renter and have been for the last four years. And I'll also be exercising that vote in the next election, as I did in the last. What Mr. Jones described as something that is hard for him to get his head around is factually baseless and potentially damaging to a large group of people who are active in our community, registered to vote, and are also renters. Additionally, many of which are like me, who intend to rent in Thousand Oaks to save money, so that we may one day become a homeowner in today's increasingly unaffordable housing market, something of which Thousand Oaks is no stranger to. The rent to save, excuse me, the, the type of person I am describing is actually somebody I have experienced firsthand with. My girlfriend rented for many years, working and saving money, and while she rented and saved money, about a year and a half ago, she was finally able to cash in and is now a proud homeowner in Thousand Oaks. She did not stay a renter. I think it is important that while Mr. Jones has every right to remain with his opinion as he holds on the housing development, that he, at the very least, amend and clarify the statements he made last month to something better than the phoned-in and baseless ones he provided with us last month. Lastly, I'd also like to thank Councilmember Al Adams for providing statements on the contrary to those made by Ed Jones, and also for giving clarity and perspective to the outlandish and frankly, fear-mongering comparison of Thousand Oaks and Santa Monica purported by Mayor Bill de la, de la Peña. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Patrick DeRoz, followed by Anna Lee Fushy, also joining us via video.
Thank you very much. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Patrick DeRoz, and I wanted to speak to briefly address some of the sentiment that I've witnessed among some of the councilmembers in, in previous meetings, as well as the specific comments made a couple of weeks ago, that renters have negative social, societal implications here that they would bring to the city. So, I too have lived in this, in the city of Thousand Oaks for over 30 years. I was raised here, brought my family back here, and now raising a, a large family here in the city. We love it here. I also work here. I'm a commercial real estate advisor, and I, I advise many of the biotech and life science companies back in the Rancho Caneo District, as well as other companies, employers here in the city. I, I want to give you my perspective that I disagree with those sentiments, as stated by the councilmembers, and particularly the comments made a couple of weeks ago. And I believe that we're negatively impacting our community by not being open to the idea of new housing and multifamily development. I think it's key to our city's success. I personally would like to see a lot of these struggling retail centers and vacant lots that have been, in some cases, eyesores for many years, converted and, and beautified and, and made, and put into good use. I'd like to see more people frequenting the restaurants that I've seen closed down that haven't made it. And I believe that young renters, first-time homebuyers, entry-level homebuyers would benefit our community in making some of these new types of amenities that many of us here in the city would like to see. I really do believe that renters and owners of starter homes would greatly benefit the community, and I, I don't see that as a negative impact. I've, I'm also a member of the GPAC, so I've, I've been involved for the past 18 months in the General Plan Advisory Committee. And I would tell you that from every corner of this community, I would say 95% plus, maybe higher, have been extraordinarily vocal about their need for more housing. And so, I, I'd like to challenge maybe your thought process about renters and, and what that will do for our community. In working on a daily basis with these life science and biotech companies, I can tell you that we are, we have had tremendous growth here in the city for the past two, three years. But the number one challenge for us as a community in both keeping companies like Amjun and growing companies like Atara Bio, Westlake Bio, is their ability to get young talent. They need young talent, and we don't have the housing to get them here, and most of them are tapped out. And they're getting these, these, these people coming in from West LA, and there's only so much that we can do. So, if we can provide more amenities, more housing, I believe that we'll be able to grow, well, as a community. And, and the one thing I keep hearing is, "We don't want to be the San Fernando Valley." The San Fernando Valley, none of us do. I, I, I don't. But the San Fernando Valley has 2 million people, would be the fifth-largest city in the country if it weren't part of the city of Los Angeles. I think most of us are concerned about traffic, so let's let these developers who are proposing these ideas get through a pre-screen and address the needs of the community as we can see it, but not with an attitude that we don't need that. We do, and I just thought it would be helpful for you to hear that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have, and forgive me for mispronouncing your last name, Anna Leah Fushy.
Fucy, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that last name?
Fucy.
Fucy, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Anna Leah. I live in Santa Rosa Valley, and I'm 25 years old. I attended Thousand Oaks High School and have worked most of my life in Thousand Oaks. It baffles me to hear some of Ed Jones' comments at the last council meetings, last council meeting about renters being a separate society that he does not care to welcome to Thousand Oaks. I don't know where we skipped a step in thinking that most people get started, getting started in life jump right to buying property, or that renters do not care about their community. Over the last year, I've been looking to move to Thousand Oaks, and I'm not ready to buy a home. Student loan debt is not what it used to be, and many struggle to stay afloat with other expenses. I am not surprised by a 90-year-old man who's clearly forgotten what it's like to exist before owning property, but his discriminatory comments aside, I am more surprised at Mayor Claudia Bill de la Peña's defense for him. She had the opportunity to defend us, as Al Adams did, but instead chose to silence Al and condemn his, condemn him for his support of us, the renters. Al takes a lot of heat for working with developers, but it should not go unnoticed that Mayor Claudia shut down Al's civil disagreement and instead sided with the narrow-minded views of some of these older residents. Not even thinking about the young adults trying to become established in this community. You are literally renovating parts of this town to bring life into the community, and yet in condemning renters, you're denying a younger generation from experiencing this beautiful town that we have. The ones that will continue to keep the city thriving by eventually deciding to put down roots here. And I also don't know where the city council consumes its news or gets its data, but to say that young, that renters or a younger generation don't get involved in their community or politics is absurd. All of 2020 and going into 2021 is exact proof that the opposite is true. I also found her comments on the future of Thousand Oaks outlandish and misleading. She was once my favorite city councilmember, but her comments and behavior towards applicants, staff, and fellow councilmembers at these meetings have been disrespectful. And if it wasn't clear, I want to say that I appreciate Al's defense of renters. Many of my friends are currently renters in Thousand Oaks, and they love the community despite the high prices. We all want this town to flourish, and my last line is just, "Don't take one step forward and two steps back." That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Cody Knapp on video, followed by Cindy Liu, also joining us via video. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Cody Knapp. I'm 27 years old, and I've lived here in Thousand Oaks for the past 22 years. I've been a registered voter since 2012, and I've voted in every election since then. The last three years, I've been a renter here in Thousand Oaks as well. I recently moved out of the Knowles apartment complex, where I was paying $2,300 a month for a two-bedroom unit. After I left, they, they rented the very same apartment for $2,700. Either rental rate is more than my parents paid for their monthly mortgage on a house, which is also here in Thousand Oaks. When my parents moved here in 1996, they bought an acre of land with a three-bed, two-bath house for $235,000. Now, you can't find a townhome around here for less than double that. Adding more townhomes and condos is not the answer. Renters need more affordable housing so they can save money and become established. Ed Jones seems to think that this is not the goal of the common renter. He admits he hasn't done any research, but instead bases his knowledge on years of stereotyping. Mayor Bill de la Peña fell silent when it came to defending the renters at the last council meeting, even though, only an hour before then, she was celebrating the commitment of 18-year-old Wilbert. Where do you expect him to live after he's done with school? Will he be able to buy a home here? Ed Jones makes that sound so easy. If he doesn't buy, will his commitment to his community just bleed away? These are obviously dumb questions, as would Ed Jones' assumption and Claudia's disregard to Al's comments at the end of the last meeting. Nobody likes to hear when they're wrong, and Al's quick use of facts defeated her whole argument against the development. Now, I wish the Acorn would catch up and start reporting on what's actually going on and stop catering to Claudia and Ed's egos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Cindy Liu, followed by Neil Patton.
My name is Cindy Liu, and I'm the founder of We Belong 805, a grassroots organization that advocates for community access and representation for disabled individuals. I'm calling tonight about the general plan process to date. I appreciate and recognize the months of hard work and community efforts that have gone into developing the draft land use maps. However, I'm very concerned of the comprehensive nature of the process and direct efforts to include the voices of our disabled, Spanish-speaking, and other underrepresented communities like our homebound senior citizens. If representation, access to the process has not been provided to a sizable portion of our community, our plan and the process is not comprehensive, it's exclusive. On item number two of the draft guiding principles, we reference community values and speak of communities that are welcomed and embraced, yet we exclude the disabled community, approximately 10% of our population. Unfortunately, that exclusion was on display on February 2nd during the land use presentation. Myself and another community member requested closed captioning and the availability of an ASL interpreter. A rep from Ramion Associates said closed captioning would be available the next day on the city's YouTube channel. With no way to ask questions, participate in the live polls, or get our questions answered, I'm sure you can see how limiting our access excluded us from meaningfully real-time input like everybody else. By the way, it was not available next day as promised, rather 40 hours, 48 hours later. I'm really embarrassed for our city. I'm not certain if being denied a reasonable accommodation such as closed captioning is indeed a violation of the American with Disabilities Act or Section 504, but it certainly violates the spirit of those laws and all city assertions that this process was inclusive and comprehensive. To date, the Spanish versions of the land use maps and the presentations are not available on the city's website, and Spanish is the second-most spoken language in our community, representing roughly, roughly 25% of our population. Again, not inclusive or comprehensive. We Belong 805 would happily engage in good-faith discussions and collaboration with our city managers and city leaders. We respectfully request the following: Include the disabled community in the final version of the guiding principles. Provide closed captioning, ASL, and real-time Spanish translations at all city-related presentations and meetings, which is an easy fix in the era of Zoom. And Madam Mayor, Bill de la Peña, please create an ad hoc Council on Disability Community Inclusion to review the general plan, since a sizable number of community members have been locked out of the process to date. It's urgent, and the window of opportunity to course correct is small. For those community members listening, if you want to participate, email me at webelong805@gmail.com if you want to join us. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do we have Neil Patton with us?
Here, ma'am.
Okay, very good. You're next.
Thank you. Good evening, Lady Mayor, and members of the city council and staff. I am sincerely grateful to have the opportunity to address you all this evening. I've been in conversation in recent months with Jonathan Surratt, the Cultural Affairs Director for the city, and out of respect, but somewhat belatedly perhaps, I asked him beforehand to present to you on my behalf what is tantamount to an executive summary of the undertaking by my company, GarageBand. I'm not sure if you received it, but in the meantime, I'll proceed. I'm sure Jonathan will get it to you. I've been a resident here within the community for more than 30 years, and my first visit here to the city of Thousand Oaks was in the early 80s. Prior to that, I'd become aware of the development here within the eastern part of the Ventura County while flying in and out of Oxnard and Camarillo airports in the late 70s. And during that time, I bore witness what really can be to the evolution, the transformation of the landscape below me. I'd never seen anything quite like it all those years back, and now today, the city of Thousand Oaks I'm proud to call home. I've never sort of, this is where I brought up my three children. It's where my youngest was born. All of my children's schooling was here. They were raised here from kindergarten through high school. And in that time, I was truly privileged to watch them participate within the community in so many different activities, not just in school, but in many other after-school programs, including the, the T-ball and the Little League Band and Choir, flag football, Pop Warner Adnauzian, youth basketball and soccer, to wrap it up there. I was fortunate as a dad to participate with them. I'm proud to say, along the way, I was also truly fortunate to get that knowledge for that, and with one of the teams, we won a championship. Go Bra. As for the Thousand Oaks International Festivals, which is what I'm dropping on you all, what else should I share with you? And then, my bona fides, if you want to scan the international movie database, you'll find me in there, but I've been in the arts and culture business for over 40 years, 50 years to be precise. And 25 years ago, I was a founding member of the Kingsman Shakespeare, and during that time, I collaborated with Canejo Valley Unified School District, developed a curriculum for the schools. I did a film and TV curriculum for Oaks Christian High School. I've worked with juvenile offenders. I've worked with juvenile offenders, youth I have been working with all my life. What I'm trying to do here is introduce to the city of Thousand Oaks for one week, then two, and then perhaps three, an international festival. Jonathan will hand out later the executive summary. There is more information, should you so require it. The most important thing in the development of this going forward is a comprehensive risk assessment plan, which I'm diligently working on with the appropriate authorities. The corporate social responsibility of Thousand Oaks International Festivals is paramount to me, to embrace all aspects within the community. Collaborations with members of the community is absolutely paramount as well. The most important thing, though, right now is to gear it towards the economic recovery of this wonderful little city of ours that's continuing to grow. The international festival will bring diverse revenue streams into the community. The hospitality industry will perhaps be the first to notice it. I do hope for the collaboration of members within the community. There's going to be job opportunities for juniors and high schoolers, juniors and seniors in high school, returning freshmen. And I look forward to developing this with the members of the community, and I look forward and keep your fingers crossed that all of this will come to fruition. Is it altruistic?
Mr. Patton, I'm so very sorry. You're well over your time already, and your time has run out, but we...
Altruism by design. Take care of you all and thank you very much indeed for giving me the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you very much, and we will continue to work on this with Mr. Soret as well because your idea is really wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Max, and then followed by Carol Shelton. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and council members. I wanted to comment on statements from Councilmember Jones at the last city council meeting.
Max, may I please have your city of residence? And how do you pronounce your last name?
Yeah, my name is Max Guinness, and I live in Oxnard.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to comment on statements from Councilmember Jones at the last meeting. When criticizing apartments proposed for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, he said, I quote, "I think we're building two societies here. The homeowners, who, as we all know, take an interest in civic life," and he went on, "so it goes against my thinking to all of a sudden convert everything to apartments in this town." When Councilmember Adam pushed it back on this statement, Jones continued, quote, "I think renters are fine people. I just don't think they have the same level of community interest as homeowners do." I want to say that I am a lifelong renter and I've been heavily involved in my community. I've been active in local political groups for the past several years, and I'm the founder of Ventura County Yimby, a grassroots group working to end the housing shortage here in Ventura County. Many other members of our group, which is over 500 members strong, are also renters. We do this because we want the best for our community. My father, an Argentinian immigrant, was also a lifelong renter, and he's also been active in his community, organizing fellow Latinos for political causes in California. That is, he was a lifelong renter until he purchased a home in 2005. He then foreclosed on it in the 2009 financial crisis, and he's gladly returned to renting ever since. As an economist, I can tell you that access to rental housing isn't just more inclusive to more diverse types of residents, especially those who struggle to afford down payments. It's also good for the economy. Investing the bulk of one's net worth in a single volatile asset is rarely good financial advice, and people need housing options that don't demand that. Rental housing also offers more flexible housing to young people who are vital to entrepreneurship and new industries. This is all somewhat tangential to the project that was discussed at the last meeting, which didn't reduce homeownership by a single home. That project provided dense infill housing, which is good for the environment and good for affordability, and I hope you move to approve its development quickly. But more importantly, I hope you consider that many of your constituents choose to rent, and they deserve as much representation and respect as constituents who choose to own. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Carol Shelton via video, followed by Lisa Powell via phone. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carol Shelton, and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for the last 40 years. I love and support two individuals who have a dual diagnosis of ADD or intellectual and developmental disability and mental illness. While this is a very complicated topic, tonight's comments center around crisis response in Thousand Oaks. Though the whole county is impacted, my story is not an isolated issue. There are other families just like mine. This was taken verbatim from the Ventura County Behavioral Health website. Ventura County Behavioral Health provides crisis intervention services for psychiatric emergencies. The crisis team operates 24 hours per day, seven days per week, and is accessed by the entire community. This is not what happens. Again, I am speaking about families of individuals with ADD and mental health disorders. Our families are often instructed to contact the Sheriff's Department or to take our loved ones to the ER. We must rely on the Ventura County Sheriff's Department or the ER during psychiatric emergencies. This places our families and their loved ones at risk. In the end, Ventura County Behavioral Health, or VCBH, is consulted, but only after pressure is exerted by the hospital or the deputies responding. This must change. VCBH and its crisis team categorically deny access to a service that is open to the entire community. What if they categorically denied access to seniors or to marginalized communities? Would that be acceptable? California and its legislature made a promise to individuals with ADD and their families to ensure that they would have access to an array of services and supports that would allow them to live in the community as is their right. Ventura County Behavioral Health must hold up its end of this promise by either serving these individuals or contracting this out. I bring this before our council because each call to a family like mine keeps our officers off the street. The CIT officers that respond are not equipped, nor should they be, to make these complicated decisions in isolation for individuals with ADD and mental illness. This places an undue burden on the Sheriff's Department. I've been advocating before the Ventura County Behavioral Health Board, and it is clear they are not interested in addressing the crisis response inequities. It is my sincere hope that this starts a conversation that affects change. Will this council bring this issue on behalf of families like mine? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, via phone, Lisa Powell, followed by Janet Share via video.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Powell, and I'm a longtime Thousand Oaks resident. As a social worker and community volunteer, I've often worked with populations that are underserved and underrepresented. I've been following recent activities within our city that I see as intertwined, the current general plan amendment process, and the requests by local residents for the city council to issue a resolution on equity. Equity can be described as a provision of varying levels of support based on specific needs to achieve greater fairness. Equity says if we're going to have a fair, just, and free society, we must put into place efforts for all people to be able to meet their basic needs and take advantage of available opportunities. For some, discussion centered around equity may seem abstract. For historically underrepresented populations, however, as well as those committed to supporting them, the concept of equity is critically important. Our general plan's guiding principles state the city's commitment to being an inclusive and welcoming community. In the July 2020 GPAC session, the city's general plan consultant said in regard to equity, "This is what we're trying to achieve in the general plan." So we know that key goals of the city's general plan include equity and inclusion, yet I don't know that I've seen evidence that these values, as well as diversity, are indeed being prioritized. Thinking about the general plan, have we included all stakeholders? Is zoning inclusionary? How will we ensure enough housing that is affordable so that we no longer have a waiting list of 3,000 households at many mansions? Is our burgeoning low-income senior population being considered? Are we including community land trust and other innovative solutions in the mix of developing more housing? Many in this community have watched or been involved in the advocacy around vulnerable populations in the Caneo Valley Unified School District in recent years. Numerous groups are engaged in important work for student groups such as BIPOC, Differently Abled, and LGBTQ+. These advocates organized because the needs of certain groups weren't being met. When these voices are heard and ultimately included, systems like the school district or city government ideally begin to adapt and make changes to ensure they're modifying or designing services to meet the needs of all students or residents. These groups needed to organize because current public policies, laws, and norms have not caught up to what we understand now about how to be more equitable and inclusive as compared to the past. A willingness to include and respect all residents and have tough conversations about issues like structural racism and barriers to access is critical to developing better policies and a stronger community. When values like equity and inclusion are centered, not only do historically underrepresented groups thrive, but we all benefit. I hope that our city council will consider some of these issues and engage in these discussions with our communities here in Thousand Oaks so that we can make our city better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Janet Share. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Janet Share, and I don't know why I'm on a phone, because I...
No, we have you on video.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
I didn't see that. I live in Westlake Village area, Thousand Oaks. Additionally, I'm on the board, I'm a board member of T.O. Arts, and I'm joining you tonight to express my support for a potential development on the Lakes property. Allowing this development to move forward in the process will give everyone a chance to eventually see a formal proposal, which could provide significant benefits to the arts. Having residents right next to the Civic Arts Plaza would provide potential audience members who could seek out entertainment at the Bank of America Arts Center without having to drive elsewhere. Development on the property would be an opportunity to move forward with the development of a downtown centered around the theaters. This would help to create a walkable destination where people could come for an evening, excuse me, for dinner, coffee, they could see a show, they could have a drink afterwards, and all of this by parking lots and walking around. The connection between the lakes and the Civic Arts Plaza could be a place where we could feature public art. I feel like a development in this area could provide some new energy and enthusiasm, which could also help us to attract more diverse audiences and expand the reach of T.O. Arts and other arts organizations who call the Bank of America Performing Arts Center home. I know this is an early stage. I'm not endorsing any final development proposals or asking you to, but I am asking for you to allow this process to move forward so that we can all see the type of final proposal which could be created. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight and for your support of T.O. Arts and the arts community. Thank you.
Well, we need to thank you, Ms. Share, for doing all the things that you have done for the city of Thousand Oaks, including this chamber in which I'm sitting right now is named after you and your husband, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we can now go to, oh, the city manager, would you like to address some of the comments that were made?
Sure, sure. Thank you so much, Mayor Bild de la Pena. Just a few follow-up comments. Our first speaker talked about the Senior Adult Master Plan. I really encourage participation in that, and you can find that up on our website at The comments regarding accessibility and the general plan, staff has met with the speaker on two occasions and continues to make refinements to the process all future meetings. The request came that evening for closed captioning, and we are now able to provide that at all subsequent meetings, so we've addressed that issue. And we'll continue to meet and engage with her and others in order to find new opportunities to make the process more inclusive, and staff's very involved in that. And I believe that's it for my follow-up comments.
What about what Mr. Patton said regarding the work or the project that he's working on with, for the arts?
Yeah, so he met with, as he referred, he met with Cultural Affairs Director Jonathan Soret. Jonathan has a packet of information that'll be provided to the entire council that references the proposal that he mentioned.
Great, thank you. All right. And with that, we go to the consent calendar, and we only have three items on the consent calendar this evening. Anything that my colleagues would like to pull?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah. I was going to comment briefly, if I may, because my name, I believe, was mentioned. I would just like to tell Ryan, Patricia, Anna Lee, and Cody that I'm not opposed to renters. Madam Mayor, I think you and I both, when we had the matter last week of the, what we call the Christmas tree or the pumpkin patch lot on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, expressed the idea that it'd be better if we could have condos rather than apartments. And I made the statement that I didn't think that renters were as involved, based on many years of campaigning and trying to, because of experience of not finding many registered voters in apartments, perhaps I drew too broad a conclusion about whether they are involved in the community or not, because I felt if they weren't registered, they couldn't vote for city council or park board or school board or local bond issues. I'm very happy to hear the remarks of Ryan, Patricia, Anna Lee, and Cody, and if that's true, I mean, I haven't made an experiment lately, but if they are involved and they do, they are concerned about the character of our community, I'm very glad to hear that. But you see, if we, you say that some people are renting and they're saving up to buy a house. It's actually better if you're in a condo, because those monthly payments are giving you some equity in that dwelling unit. And then you have the ability to deduct that from your income tax, and you establish that equity that could allow you to sell that unit at some point in time, and then perhaps have a down payment for a single-family detached unit. Maybe that's not people's goal, but I would just like to say that I'm not young, but I'm not out of touch. I'm currently teaching two large classes at Pierce College, where I think the average age is around 19 and 20, and we get along very well. And as the person correctly quoted me, I do think renters are fine people. But, and we have a matter coming up tonight, and I'm going to ask the developer if he could make those units condos for the two reasons I just mentioned. You're developing equity that you could later turn into a down payment on the house. And secondly, I still have the feeling that you're more likely to put down roots here and become involved, but I would welcome any of these four, or if there were more, to contact me, just call the city, because I'd love to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'm sorry, due to Brown Act, I have been advised, we need to keep it short, and so we will, we will keep it short. Just wanted to also clarify that I wasn't defending your statements last time. I was simply trying to stick to the council norms, where council members need to refrain from criticizing one another, because politics is a blood sport in Washington, but we don't want to do this here in Thousand Oaks. So that is why I interrupted and needed to make sure that our discussion was not getting out of hand. So I hope that that is understood, just wanted to clarify that. With that, we will go to, as I said, consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be discussed separately?
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we pass the consent calendar. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to just very briefly discuss item A and item C.
Okay, so we will pull item A and item C. We will wait to approve the calendar, Mayor Portem Angler, if it's okay with you, until we have discussed both A and... until we have discussed both A and C. Would that be okay? Mr. Engler?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I'm going to be very brief. I just wondered, my wife and I and others that I know have had season tickets for the year 2019-2020. Of course, we weren't able to complete the shows in the spring of 2020. And I just wondered to ask Jonathan, the people that had those season tickets last year and have them again this year, what, how are those going to be disposed of when we are able, hopefully, to get the theater open again?
Mr. Jones, the dates for the shows are continually being rescheduled. So, as those dates are reconfirmed, then emails and phone calls are being, are going out to those ticket holders to notify them of the changes. And then those ticket holders are being given options if they are able to proceed and then their tickets that they've already been holding will still be valid. But if they are unable to attend, then we have different options for them as well.
So, you're going to be notifying the ticket holders then?
Yes. Notifications, notifications will be going out through either the box office or through the promoter directly.
Thank you. And on item 7C, I noted that with these painting contracts, we have a lot of people on the list that are from various cities around. When I was with the county, we had a policy, if we had work to, and just sort of piggyback on what the gentleman said last two weeks ago about this project that we are in the way of approving there at the Christmas tree lot. He wanted to see if we would use local people in that project. And I'm wondering if we have any policy or if we might consider a policy when we have, say, matters like the painting list that I saw in the packet, if we would have a policy might give a certain percentage of preference or local contractors. Would somebody care to answer that?
Hi, Councilmember Jones. I just wanted to first point out that we went through a request for proposals and every single company painting contractor that submitted a proposal is being included in this item tonight. So, every single one of ones that apply to our request for proposals, we're issuing a contract with city council approval tonight. We do currently have a local preference program that is specific in nature to equipment purchases where those vendors do receive a discount on those equipment bids. As far as a more broad program or policy, that was certainly something that staff could investigate further.
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this, but I'd like to speak to you further about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we did have a motion by Mayor Protam Engler to approve our council calendar items, I mean, consent calendar items A, B, and C. If there are no further comments, then I will call for the vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Engler?
Microphone? Your microphone, Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Now, on to our department reports. 9A, dealing with the collection of residential wastewater service rates on the Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. And that will be presented by our Revenue Operations Manager, Sherri Johnson. Good evening.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña, city council members. This discussion is in regards to the collection of the city's wastewater utility service charges being billed via the Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. Under state law, municipal sewer districts have the legal authority to place wastewater service charges on the county's property tax roll. The city first became involved in providing wastewater service to our residents in the mid-1960s. In 1966, the city began negotiations for the purchase of the Canayo Sanitation Company. Then, in 1967, city council proactively established a municipal sewer district, thus allowing us the opportunity today to discuss the collection of residential wastewater service charges on the Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. The city-operated wastewater utility is a public enterprise managed by the Public Works Department with utility billing and customer service managed by the Finance Department. The city's wastewater system provides sewer service to over 38,000 wastewater customers. And of this, over 36,000 wastewater accounts are single-family residential customers and the remaining accounts are either commercial or multifamily residential. Wastewater service charges are the responsibility of the property owner and currently, customers are issued bi-monthly bills directly from the city of Thousand Oaks. The current rate for a single-family residential property inside city limits is $59.90 every other month. Of this, of the single-family residential properties, approximately 16,000 accounts are also part of the city's water utility service billing. Currently, all properties connected to the city sewer system receive a bill directly from the city of Thousand Oaks. So, although the city has historically billed sewer service charges in-house, we are allowed the option to collect those fees by way of direct assessment. Examples of direct assessments that could appear on a property tax roll include landscape maintenance fees, flood control, trash service, sewer service, sidewalk repair, and lighting assessments. Direct assessments are itemized separately on the secured property tax bill and the county's auditor controller acts as an agent for each agency by placing the direct assessment on the tax bill and distributing the tax collected to that agency. Some of our local agencies that collect wastewater service charges via Ventura County Direct Assessment include Triumpho Sanitation District, City of Simi Valley Sanitation, Ojai Valley Sanitation, and the Ventura County Waterworks District 16, which is Pai Ru. The county of Ventura currently charges 21 cents per parcel for a direct assessment and $21 per parcel for any mid-year corrections. Collecting single-family residential wastewater charges on the county property tax roll would cost the city approximately $7,700 per year. Wastewater service charges are more likely to change mid-year at a commercial or multifamily residential property than at a single-family residential property. So, to avoid mid-year correction charges, commercial and multifamily accounts could remain a part of the in-house city utility billing system. Collecting wastewater service charges on the Ventura County Property Tax Roll would result in a significant cost savings for the city and create efficiency for the customers we serve. The city would save over $70,000 a year in postage and printing materials and would also save over 3,200 hours in staff time spent processing bills and performing account maintenance. The staff time saved would allow the Finance Department to begin converting bi-monthly water bills to monthly bills, which will better assist the city and our customers in our water conservation efforts. Instead of printing, issuing, and processing payments for over 36,000 bi-monthly residential customers, the county would add the total annual wastewater service charges to the parcel's property tax bill. Residents would no longer need to initiate a request to start or stop wastewater service and residents would no longer have to worry about submitting payment directly to the city six times per year. Should council desire to proceed with this discussion, then affected property owners will be notified and allowed the opportunity to share their feedback at a public hearing. Staff recommends that council set April 13th as the public hearing date for residential wastewater service rate collection via direct assessment on the Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. Staff, including Jamie Voscarino, Finance Director, and Cliff Finley, Public Works Director, are available should you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it. All right. We do have a recommendation before us. Are there any questions? Let me check real quick. If anyone has his hand up. Mr. McNamie. Councilmember McNamie.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Johnson, that's a wonderful savings to the city. Makes it more convenient attaching it to the property tax. $70,000 is a nice amount of money to save for the city so it can be put to other services within the city. My question to you is the following. If we have someone who has a home with one restroom and two people living there, they would be paying the same amount monthly for wastewater as someone who has five bathrooms and 10 people living in the home. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's how our rates are structured now.
Now, my sense of fairness is such that why should people, two people, be paying the same wastewater rate as someone who has five or 10 people in the house? As I look at other cities, some do it as a percentage of the amount of water, drinking water that comes into the house is assumed to go into the wastewater treatment plant and it's done as a prorated basis. That, to me, is more equitable given that the household of five or 10 people would consume more water, creating more wastewater as compared to a homeowner with two people within the residence. And my sense of fairness and equity, which is a common word being thrown around now, I would think that the prorated basis, based on how much drinking water comes into the house, would be a better way to go. What's your thoughts on something like that?
So, there's a few reasons our residential wastewater rates are not based on water use or the number of people in a household. We want a charge for water that goes into the wastewater system and that's indoor use versus outdoor use. To do this, we would need to have either flow monitors on each property or, as you said, we would need to know every customer's water use. Although nearly 90% of the city is a wastewater customer, only around 40% are city water customers. So, unfortunately, at this time, we don't have the data. Also, estimates of indoor water use could be done based on winter average, but given our lovely weather here in the city of Thousand Oaks, water use doesn't always vary in winter months. And additionally, when we look at household size density in Thousand Oaks, it appears to be mostly similar. So, neighborhoods do vary in size and type in Thousand Oaks, but overall, the average amongst the 36,000 single-family residential counts is cost-effective and equitable amongst the customer class. Lastly, the current cost of service study, which council adopted fall of 2019, looked at rates amongst various customer types. We are required by law to conduct a cost of service study every 10 years, but the city proactively conducts one every five to six years. And we will have the opportunity to look at changes to the rate structure during our next cost of service study and perhaps technology or data exchange improvements may allow for a different methodology, like you mentioned.
I appreciate that consideration. What I'm considering here at this point is our city staff to look at the possibility of moving over to a more equitable distribution of the wastewater costs. Yes, I understand that our city water, we only have access to that data directly. However, I would think in this age of digital technology and computers, we would have access to the other homeowners serviced by other water distribution purveyors and thus be able to incorporate that rather easily into our tabulation for wastewater. So, that way, everyone is paying their fair share of the wastewater that is generated from that household based on how much their consumption is. And I would like city staff to, and I will work with them offline, to begin to look at that. So, when what you say, Ms. Johnson, that's going to come up for discussion in the future, we have some numbers and some potential availability. Because I'm still having a hard time justifying a household of two people paying the same amount of wastewater as someone who has a household of 10 people, regardless of the number of people. And I'm not looking at a people count. I'm just looking at a water consumption count to be the driving force in this and move down that avenue so that way we can kind of make a little bit more fair based on what the consumption is and going into the wastewater system. But I thank you for your effort on this and I'm delighted that it's moving in the direction of putting it on the property tax bill. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. We do have only one thing before us and that is to schedule a public hearing. And so, that is the item before us. Are there any additional questions? If not, then I'm looking for a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Excellent. We have a motion. And Madam Clerk, would you please do the vote?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. Thank you. We will now go to item 9B, the Alex Fiori Thousand Oaks Teen Center and Global Adult Community Center Capital Improvement. And that item will be presented by our Deputy Finance Director, Carrie Mattson. Good evening.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña and council members. I am here tonight with Tom Hare, CRPD Administrator, to present the next steps in the Teen and Global Community Center Capital Improvement Project. A quick overview of what we will be discussing tonight. We will provide a brief recap of the project's background, an overview of the activities provided at both centers, a description of the completed project plans, the estimated construction timeline, and the city grant agreement. The city and CRPD have had a longstanding partnership in providing parks and recreation amenities to the Thousand Oaks community. In 1985, the city agreed to construct the Teen and Global Adult Centers on the Canayo Creek North property located on Jan's Road. The Teen Center opened in 1989, followed by the Global Center in 1991. CRPD owns the land while the city owns and maintains the buildings. Over this 30-year cooperative history, both facilities have been highly used. Their activity is expanding and evolving, but with neither building receiving a major renovation since they opened. In the early 2000s, the city and CRPD envisioned expanding the Teen Center with a full-size gym that would be utilized by both the teen and adult populations. This project concept was originally estimated about $5 million. However, the project was put on hold in 2008 due to the financial impacts of the Great Recession. During the last capital improvement budget process for the fiscal years 2019 through 2021, city and CRPD staff reevaluated the scope of the gym expansion project, taking into consideration the addition of boys' and girls' club gyms which had opened in the city since 2008. While evaluating citywide needs, CRPD staff solicited feedback from patrons, teen and senior advisory councils, and center staff. From those efforts, CRPD staff reimagined a new conceptual plan for improvement at both locations. This new concept for the project was reviewed by the Capital Facilities Committee in April of 2019. On June 11, 2019, council approved $3 million as part of the adoption of the city's 2019-21 CIP budget. Also, on June 11, council approved a $300,000 capital improvements grant agreement with CRPD for the Phase 1 design and pre-construction process of the project. The completed conceptual plan was brought back to the Capital Facilities Committee for review on September 16, 2019. Unfortunately, with the budgetary uncertainty brought on by the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the city requested CRPD to temporarily put the project on hold until the impacts to the fiscal year 2019-20 financial results were known. The city's comprehensive financial report was completed in December 2020 and on December 10, staff returned to the Capital Facilities Committee to recommend proceeding with the project. I will now turn it over to Tom Hare to provide some information on the activities provided by both centers, the project description, and the construction timeline.
Hey, thanks, Carrie, for doing the introduction there for the project. And really happy to be here, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña and the rest of the council members. And as you well know, we've had many successful relationships between the Canayo Creek and Park District and the city of Thousand Oaks over the years. And the Teen Center and the Global Adult Center are just some great examples of that. So, I just want to get a little bit more in-depth on what it means and what the operations and activities are at the Global Center and the Teen Center. So, let's look at the Global Center. Actually predates the building that's there at the Canayo Creek North. The original partnership was in 1975 on Canayo School Road, you know, crossing the lakes there. But due to the dramatic popularity and the growth that had happened, you know, they said, hey, let's... you know, they said, hey, let's move to a new location. So that's how they found the, uh, Canoe Creek North complex. Uh, it was a good home for the, the senior center and also the teen center. Um, and then, then that was a really great, um, thanks to the council members back then and our, and the Canoe Rock and Park District Board, especially to Alex Fiori for helping out with the Teen Center. Um, so let's just talk about like what happens or pre-pandemic of the Global Center, just to tell you how popular it is. We get about over sixteen thousand patrons per month at that place. It's a really hopping place out there. So many classes, workshops, and trips, and special events. And of course, bingo happens there on a regular basis, which everybody absolutely loves. You can't mess with their bingo. And one of the more popular things we have out there, which serves the community greatly, is the Canoe Senior Volunteer Program. We have about, uh, a thousand volunteers that provide about a quarter million dollar, quarter million hours, excuse me, quarter million hours of volunteer work for many different organizations throughout the, uh, the community. So it's a really, it's a, it's an excellent place and, uh, love having that in our community. So let's go to the next slide. So the Teen Center, uh, the goal was always and it continues to be that we're always looking for positive alternatives for teens for their leisure activities. So we figure if we give them something good to do, that they'll, they'll stay out of trouble. Um, so we have over nine thousand patrons per month there, you know, pre-COVID. Uh, and similarly, we offer lots of classes, workshops, and sports leagues, and many exciting excursions, and of course, the fantastic dances that they have there. Uh, we work very closely with the Canoe Valley Unified School District, um, and their teachers and principals and administrators to figure out what's the best way to incorporate the teens into the community. Uh, we're very thankful for this, uh, facility that's been around, like Carrie said, over a little over thirty years, because this is definitely an investment in the future of the leaders of our community that, uh, were helped grow in shape and, and become important, important members of our community. Okay, next slide, Carrie. So now for the project, uh, you know, and Carrie had mentioned before, uh, and it's worth noting again, that the project wasn't just something with just staff. We got quite a bit of input from the seniors and from the teens and from the advisory, uh, councils that they have on what should be happening here. Um, first of all, you know, I'm going to tell you about what's not shown on this plan. This is, this is the plan for the backyard, but what's not shown, um, is over at the Global Community Center, uh, we're doing some interior renovations to the, the restrooms to improve the efficiency and the accessibility. Uh, there's going to be a shaded fitness area out in the back that's going to replace the putting green. Uh, and we're also going to renovate the horseshoe pit area for usability and better, better viewing. Uh, also not shown on this is, at, over at the Teen Center, um, and so also, um, that there's very similar improvements there. There, we're going to refresh and renew the restrooms there. Uh, we're going to renovate the kitchen and some storage areas. Uh, it's also very, very important to note that, um, what other, the facilities that the Teen Center, when not in use by the teens, are used by the seniors. So it's a dual-use, uh, uh, facility that gets well-used throughout the, the whole day, you know, throughout, uh, throughout the whole year, not just, not just for teens during, uh, during the evenings and off-school hours. So let me go through with some, uh, highlights on the concept plan that you're taking a look at right now. Uh, simply put, uh, this is going to be the best backyard in the whole city. That's what we strove for and I think that's what we're going to accomplish. Uh, some highlights there, if you go to hi- uh, area number five, uh, which Carrie's rolling her mouse over right there, that's a stage with shade sales with some, uh, where we can have like outdoor concerts with like something like the Battle of the Bands. Uh, and also with the flexible seating areas, so it, it can, people could be seated, people can be, uh, standing, that just depends on what, what can happen at that stage. Uh, let's go over to, uh, area number eight, which looks like a basketball court, but it's actually a multi-use court. Uh, there's going to be basketball, volleyball, footsball, pickleball. It's also a space for those large events. So if there is a big, uh, big band out there and we could use that area for more, uh, more seating or a standing room only area for the band. Uh, area number nine, uh, is an alternative gaming area, we're calling it. Yeah, so it's got like flexible elements, uh, you can move in and out like ping pong tables or cornhole. Uh, so that should be, uh, a lot of fun and, you know, we could change, change it depending upon what the kids want. Uh, area number fifteen, there's a couple of different areas there with the, the outdoor kitchen tables, uh, so we could have some, we can teach some classes, like cooking classes, or we could, you know, use it for our barbecues or for our special events that we have. Then over at area nineteen, in the upper left there, is our skate plaza, which is very new and unique, uh, urban skate elements that will be there. It will supplement the existing skate park that we have at Orchard Community Center and then the bike slash scooter slash skate area we have at Softwood Trails Community Park. Uh, and then on area number twenty, uh, which is just, you see it long and linear, this is some, one of our art opportunities that we're going to have. Uh, so some artwork there that, uh, will be inspired by the teens and, um, so maybe someone's going to be, be able to show off their artistic abilities there. Okay, next slide, Carrie. And so, now with that, so it's going to be a wonderful project, uh, if we're successful tonight and getting the, um, the grant approved by, uh, the city council and then next week by the Canoe Rock and Park District Board, uh, we moving into bidding and pre-construction activities for the next few months. Uh, we're looking for construction to start in the summer and complete in early, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then that'll be the big party hopefully in spring, March of twenty twenty-two, and we promised the first five cheeseburgers will go to the council members if you approve this grant. Um, I just want to say, hey, thanks again to, uh, not just this council, but the prior councils and, uh, park district boards that have had the foresight, the partner on these incredible and important community facilities that we have in our community. It just, just makes our quality of life in our community what it is today. And I do, uh, want to thank also the current, uh, council and our CRPD board director for continuing to, uh, look for opportunities to expand recreation for the teen and seniors by considering this grant agreement. So back to you, Carrie.
Thank you, Tom. So the grant agreement brought tonight for council's consideration includes the expenditure authorization of the remaining two point seven million of the total three million dollar project budget. In order for CRPD to initiate the construction phase of the project, the following actions are being recommended tonight. To approve the Teen Center and Global Center Capital Improvement Grant Agreement between the city and CRPD. To authorize the expenditure of two point seven million for the construction phase. To approve the project design, plans, specifications, and working details for the project. And to delegate authority to the city engineer to approve changes through bid addenda work directives and change orders. And with that, we are both available for any questions council may have.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate this presentation. Let me see if I have any hands up from my colleagues. Uh, councilmember McNamie?
I, I wish to applaud the effort to keep the teens occupied in productive, healthy type of environment. So that way they, uh, become productive citizens, hopefully at the outset. So Tom, uh, everyone, I'd like to say thank you for making this available to the teens and getting it underway. And it doesn't take much to win me over. That hamburger goes a long way and I thank you very much for the offer.
No, no problem. You, you can have a double, Kevin.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions from my council colleagues?
Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Jones?
No, it's, it's Al.
Oh, I was told you would raise your hand in the little box. Let me see. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Adam.
I just, uh, echo, uh, Mr. McNamie's, uh, comments. The, uh, Alex Fiori Teen Center and the Global Adult Community Center are just fantastic parts of our community that make Thousand Oaks the great city that it is. And I can tell you, uh, my daughter spent many, many hours at the Teen Center when then, and when they were in middle school and they went to all the dances and it really gave kids all across, uh, the Canoe Valley the ability to meet with each other and share and, and learn, learn things about kids from different socioeconomic backgrounds. And I think that's, that's an important thing. And I'm, I really like the emphasis on the outdoor, uh, uh, project that's being built. I think it's, uh, I think it's wonderful and, uh, I'm in favor of it.
It is.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I could make a motion if you'd like.
Um, certainly, we will hear from Mr. Jones and then you can make the motion, Mr. Adam.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, echo what, uh, the two previous council members said. Seems like old time for me to see Tom Hare making a presentation because of my stint with him on the park district. And I do just like to echo what he said. I don't know of a community that has a better, uh, relationship between the park system and the city than, than we do. And it's resulted in over fifty parks and, you know, just a marvelous atmosphere here for our residents. So it's great to see you, Tom. Thanks for, uh, your presentation and thanks for this project.
And, um, before Mr. Adam makes his motion, I just wanted to say that, uh, it is absolutely wonderful and it is a relief to see that we have such good relationships with our partner agencies and CRPD is one of them. And we have always worked quite well in concert with them and the board. And when you have good relationships, good things happen. So thank you for bringing this particular project forward. Mr. Adam?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Engler has his hand up.
Did you miss? Oh, yes, I see it now too. Sorry. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, let me jump on the, uh, the train here. Uh, it's, this is one of the, the projects that, uh, we're spending, you know, quite a bit of money, but this is one of the locations that gets more use than just about any public project we have in town, set aside the roads and all that. But we have so many people enjoy this location. If we can do anything to burnish our crown jewels here, uh, I'm all for it. So, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, Councilmember Adam.
Well, thank you. Uh, yeah, I think this is a great investment in our teens and our adults and, uh, we will get a very solid return over the years with it. So with that, I'd like to move nine B.
Excellent. Mr. Adam moves nine B. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, our last item of the evening, I believe it is, yes, nine C. And that deals with residential capacity allocation for the area known as the Lakes. And for that, we will go to Steve Kearns, our Planning Division Manager. And then also later on, available for questions will be our Community Development Director, Calvin Parker. Good evening, Mr. Kearns.
This request of the applicant involves initiation of a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, and allocation of measured residential capacity. The applicant is also requesting concurrent processing of the legislative actions as well as the development permits and a pre-screen to allocate the two hundred and twenty-eight units for proposed one hundred and sixty-five unit apartment building, which I'll explain in detail later in this, in its presentation. The, for brief background, this development site is part of a specific kind of eleven, which is a civic center, civic center specific plan. This original concept was adopted in nineteen eighty-nine and this area of the site at the Lakes was always contemplated for development. Initially, it was a hotel and that subsequently changed to an IMAX theater. And obviously, neither one of those projects moved forward. Um, and before you, this evening is the proposed apartment project. In two thousand and four, amendment number two to the specific plan, and a development permit approved the current existing forty-eight thousand square foot Lakes development. Originally, the applicant, uh, Crusoe Affiliated requested two hundred thousand square feet of commercial up at the site. Um, that was ultimately denied and the smaller product came before council was approved. In two thousand, the disposition and development agreement was initially executed between the city and Crusoe Affiliated. This, uh, was most recently amended in two thousand and eight and the amendment incorporated additional retail and restaurant uses for the site. And if this project is, uh, goes forward, an amendment to this existing DDA would be required and negotiation between the city and the developer would occur at that point. Now, this area is part of the downtown core master plan. The downtown core is, uh, effectively from Herb's Road to Canoe School Road. Uh, it involves about sixty acres of land. The, the master plan established development standards and policies for activation of this area to create a downtown core. Uh, new living units were contemplated as part of this, this area, uh, including the, the soon-to-come online, uh, seventeen-ten project of the west end of the core. As a subset to the campus, uh, the downtown core master plan, there's a campus master plan that was endorsed by city council in two thousand and nineteen. This incorporated a mean street concept, which includes a pedestrian vehicular mean street, uh, traversing the campus to the front of the Civic Arts Plaza and connecting the Lakes property. And this is all, um, intended to activate the campus frontage and provide connectivity between developments. Now, in order to allocate residential capacity to this project, a change in the general plan designation is necessary. It's currently designated as commercial. That would need to go to commercial residential, which is the land use category, which applies to commercial and residential mixed-use projects. The commercial residential designation has a maximum capacity for residential units of thirty units per acre. So the allocation would be based on the overall site. This is one parcel. This is, uh, not multiple parcels. And just with, as with all of our mixed-use projects, we calculated based on the overall acreage times the maximum capacity for that designation, which in this case would be two hundred and twenty-eight units. Which again, as I mentioned earlier, um, this project is requesting a hundred and sixty-five units. So it results in an over allocation of sixty-three units. These over allocation units will not be available to the applicant. They will remain as part of the site, but they would need to be allocated by city council if the project, uh, requested additional units. So the pre-screening process is necessary. It's prerequisite for measured allocation, you know, unit allocation. And it's, it evaluates projects on an established criteria, which was recently revised, um, impaired back a little, uh, in December of two thousand twenty. And it brought it back to me and be more of a high-level use of land evaluation, whether or not the project has potential. And that city council wants to see it vetted further through the development review process. And detailed design, um, is provided through that formal application review process. Uh, and then, as I mentioned, this is only a very preliminary review of land use here by this stage. So that being said, approval of a pre-screen does not mean the project is approved. Doesn't mean that city council is endorsing the project. It's just saying that they, they think it has potential and should be looked at further and it requires the applicant to provide the formal applications to see within a one-year period. So the key considerations in the pre-screening resolution are the revenue numbers, the regional housing needs assessment, um, our contribution for the next cycle from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine is twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen units. This will provide a hundred and sixty-five units towards that allocation requirement. Uh, the project setting, its compatibility with the neighboring properties, a conceptual plan and public benefits, measured allocation, of course, of the two hundred and twenty-eight units is necessary. And then the general plan, specific plan amendments to make the documents conform to the proposed request. So spend a little time on this slide here, um, in the yellow, we're at the very beginning stage. We're allocating units only. This is not a project at this point. The applicant does not have any right to submit the formal applications at this stage. So if city council allocates the units, at that point, they go into the pre-application process, followed by formal supplemental development permits, the environmental analysis, a report prepared for pub- uh, public hearing of planning commission, and then a recommendation from the planning commission to city council. And ultimately, city council has jurisdiction over approving or denying the application at this stage. So into the actual proposed concept, it's a, an L-shaped building located at the back of the, uh, the Lakes property. Uh, it's, it includes a hundred and sixty-five apartment units. It includes private amenities and public amenities. Uh, there are existing onsite open spaces and a play area in front of the commercial portion of the site, which will still be available for public use. And in discussion with the applicant, the applicant is willing to consider providing affordable units through a development through a development agreement. Now into the actual concept site plan. As you can see, to the northly part of the site, it's the property is bound by Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the north, Caneo School Road to the east. The 101 freeway is located to the south. And of course, the civic center is located here to the west. The existing amenities include the pond, which I'm sure everyone's familiar with, in the front of the of the Lakes. The open green area and the play areas, the existing three commercial buildings. And then to the back is the proposed L-shaped apartment building. I have a couple photos here. This is a perspective from essentially Caneo School Road looking southwest to the property beyond the oak tree and beneath the blue arrow is the proposed location. This is a closer view from the same perspective, looking southwest. As you can see to the left part of the image, the 101 sound wall is located there. And then, of course, the civic center located in the backdrop. And again, from the Lakes Drive, looking south through the site, under the blue arrows is the westerly extent of the proposed L-shaped building. Now, for compatibility, the civic center is located to the west. The there's commercial to the north across Thousand Oaks Boulevard and to the northeast. There is residential beyond that along Caneo School Road on Chiquita Lane. To the east, there is additional residential units. There's also a shopping center on the corner and then on the northeast corner, Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Caneo School Road. And then there are also two pocket parks, Park of the Palace and Fire Park, shown in green. There are a couple oak trees in the vicinity of the proposed project. The applicant has indicated there'll be no impact to these trees, no removals or encroachments. But if the project goes forward, the tree permits will be required. So again, back to where we are. We're at the very beginning stage, the pre-screen. If it's approved, we get to the pre-application, form applications. The environmental analysis determine which environmental documents need be provided. Then back to Planning Commission for review and recommendation to City Council. And ultimately, City Council gets to see this again in its fully vetted stage and takes action to approve or deny at that point. So City Council's options tonight are to initiate the general plan amendment and allocate the units, allow concurrent processing of the legislative actions and the entitlements, or deny the allocation and the project ends here tonight. So this concludes staff's presentation and staff's available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns, for this presentation. I just had a quick question of the recommendations. I did not see a renegotiation of the DDA in there along with concurrent processing.
Yes, the renegotiate the DDA will be required. There'll be an amendment to that document. It'll be necessary to capture the change to the specific plan and lease agreements on the property.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will go to my colleagues first for any questions. And I have a hand up from Mr. McNamy, Councilmember McNamy, followed by Mr. Engler. And go ahead, Councilmember McNamy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am absolutely delighted that the trees will be kept untouched and not encroached upon. That eliminates a lot of discussion down the road. And looking at Rick Caruso's building projects that he has done both in the city as well as in other communities, he does first class A1 projects. And the theming that goes into it, similar to a Disney-esque kind of experience, really brings a certain flavor to his projects. And I have no doubt that'll be done to a top quality level. My question, though, is I do some number crunching here. It's my assumption that we have studio, one bedroom and two bedroom in this facility. And I applaud the effort to put rentals in there to appeal to a certain opportunity for people to reside here in Thousand Oaks, which is a great opportunity for everyone. My question regarding the parking is that when we have 165 units and two cars per unit, let's say, I'm coming up with 330 cars. And right now, the state mandates 1.6 parking spaces for any development. Again, I don't know when you've got two cars usually per unit, where you're going to put the 0.4. Which part of the chassis is going to go out on the street? And what is going to be parked under the premises or near the premises? So I'm looking at 330 cars is what's going to be probably occupied there. At 1.6 parking spaces, that's going to leave approximately 66 cars without parking, unless it's moved to 1.6 is moved to two parking spaces per one bedroom, for example. If we take 15 feet per car, that's giving me 990 feet worth of cars that need to find an alternate parking space. So if I do the math correctly, I'm coming up with over three football fields long of cars parked end to end out on the street, whether it be on Caneo School Road, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And my challenge with all these projects that are being put forth here is inadequate parking that is going to be a burden upon the streets surrounding the project. And I'd like to hear perhaps from staff and or the developer, how do we address this? Because if it comes in at two parking spaces per one bedroom as compared to 1.6, that would solve the problem. But it also would reduce the profit margin and may not make the project worthwhile moving forward. Any thoughts about that, either staff or Mr. Caruso?
I I think I can answer that for you. It's a very good point. It's a very fair point, and we need to take a look at that through the analysis of the parking and the development standard review portion. We're obviously not there yet. And the parking requirements based on our municipal code is a little different than the state's. The applicant has not indicated that they're looking for any sort of concessions through state density bonus law. So they'll have to follow our code requirements and our prescriptions for parking for the site. The product type, we're not there yet either. We don't have the floor plans, the elevations, that there's going to be subterranean or some sort of parking structure. We do have, we're very fortunate for this location to have a parking structure on the campus that's open to the public as well as the surface parking for the commercial site as well as whatever parking they provide as part of the development itself. So we will look at that. It's a very important component of the project review. And we will take a close look and make sure that we have adequate parking.
When you say the parking site that's onsite, are you referring to the city parking that's next to City Hall? Or is this another parking site I'm not familiar with?
The one next to City Hall.
Okay, so the occupants here would be using City Hall parking. So we have a Civic Arts Plaza production that has a lot of cars already in there. That also would be competing with the residents at this location. Is that correct?
What I'm saying is just pointing out that it is available for public use. If there was a demand, if someone had to vent over their apartment unit and they need additional parking, they could utilize that facility. Ideally, we would provide enough parking onsite to self-contain the parking.
Terrific. Again, we sometimes have to be creative in problem solving. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the parking, I would be curious if Mr. Caruso, one of his representatives there, if this is a problem and is it some of his other buildings? Or has he had that creative solution already worked out for us? Because it's always a concern, parking's always a concern, depending on the mix of the units and how many people will take advantage of that walkability factor that this will provide. Mr. Kearns, if you could go a little bit into the, a little bit deeper into, we're allowing 228 units, of which only 100 and what, 165 was asked for. What becomes of those units? Can we reallocate them? Is there, just go a little bit deeper into that for me, if you could.
Absolutely. That's a very good question as well, a good clarification. The measure allocation is based on our land use element of our general plan. So all the units and the capacity is derived from those densities on that map. So we're taking a density specific to one site. We're looking at this lake site isolated at 7.58 acres. And we have to allocate those units to that specific location. So we can't reallocate those units to another site. They need to remain there. And if there's not another project that ever comes forward in those units, just they don't go anywhere. So it is no reallocation. We do acknowledge that. But the project itself is limited to 165 units.
I also sharpened my pencil a little bit. If the if the applicant is asking for 165 units, that's substantially lower than the 30 units per acre that he would be allowed to build there. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, he could actually, he could request a full allocation of 228 units if the product type works with how they do their analysis in the market. So technically, they could have asked for the 228 units. They did not. The product they're proposing is 165 unit apartment complex. And I can let them get into the unit mix and what they're actually looking at. I think Councilmember McNamy mentioned the unit types, and they might be able to provide some clarification on that.
Well, this is actually a less intensive use of the property than some of our other applicants have proposed.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearns, is the number of the units before us this evening, not the requested number, but the allotted number, is that including, is that spread out over the entire parcel? Or is it only the acreage behind the commercial section?
It's the entire commercial parcel. It does not include the green open space parcel of the Lakes are. But it does include the entire development site. This is one development parcel. And the allocation is based, as all our mixed use projects are, based on the entire parcel.
Okay. And so my question also is, we do have a height limit of 75 feet. The City Hall, I believe, is about 75 feet. And I'm wondering whether these units will stick out above freeway. In other words, will they be taller than the clock tower currently at the Lakes, which is, I believe, 55 feet?
Yeah, I have to refer to the applicant on that. We have not gotten into the elevations or the proposed heights. I can tell you that the site location that this is being proposed is about 44 feet lower than the freeway. Then you also have about a 15-foot tall sound wall in that location. So just hypothetically, if it was 75 feet, you'd probably see about 16 feet above the sound wall. But we don't have a proposal yet.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, let me just double check here. I don't see any other raised hands. I will then, oh, Mr. McNamy, go ahead.
I want to come back and, Mr. Kearns, please revisit this with me. I just want to be very clear. When this deal was struck years ago by putting the retail with the restaurants there and the beautiful park in front, there was an agreement, if I understand it correctly, that a guaranteed 12% return was going to be allowed to Mr. Caruso and his project. And anything above that, the city would start to receive rent. And in the time that it's been there, the city has received zero rent because we, as a city, have not been able to get over that 12% threshold. Is that correct?
That is correct. I would prefer to Ms. Boscarino, if she could add on to that a little bit, please.
Thanks, Mr. Kearns. So yes, the original ground lease is part of the DDA, provided for a 12% preferred return for the developer on the project on their development costs. And if they achieved their 12% return, then the city would get 20% of the participating cash flow. And yes, as you mentioned, they have not received their 12% preferred return. So and thus, the city has not received any lease revenue.
Now, we have received sales tax revenue, which is a plus. But we haven't owned up to our city obligation to get this over the 12%. And what happens to that rent that's not received by the city? Is that working against the developer? Are we owing the developer that? Could you please go into that a little bit?
So no, I mean, there are provisions in the ground lease and the DDA that were possible triggers where the city would pay, but not based on the developer not receiving their 12% preferred return. So we're not in any sort of situation where the city owes any money to the developer at this point.
So what we're looking at is the developer is taking a loss up to this point on the property compared to what was expected. Not that it's gone negative necessarily, but it's one where what was the expected return hasn't happened. So the developer has taken negative on this. What I look at is I examine the square footage that was allocated. And I'm thinking to myself, this is a no win to begin with. It's a lose-lose situation, both for the city as well as for the developer, because there's not enough square footage for the retail and restaurants to make this work. Even though it's a beautiful property to look at. And again, Mr. Caruso and his projects are usually quite elegant. And the park is wonderful to look at. The buildings are terrific. What was originally proposed, my understanding is that there was going to be office building, a center in the back, a theater, so forth, which would have made more sense. And I'm looking at this thinking, well, can we make a good situation out of a bad situation? Are we able to open up the negotiations with Mr. Caruso with this project? So that way, it's a win-win for both he and the city.
Yeah, not to speak for the developer, but I believe they are completely open if this is approved tonight to reopen the DDA and the negotiations and come to a much mutual benefit to both the city, the developer, and our residents as well.
Thank you. I appreciate your clarification on that so people viewing can understand better what's going on with the project. And that Mr. Caruso, as well as the city, may come in here and try to do something different to benefit everybody involved. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to say that I like the idea of reaching a new agreement because I have always felt that the agreement that we have been operating under all these years was not satisfactory either for the developer or the city. So I like that aspect. I have one question about the allocation of these units. Is it kosher or correct to allocate units to the whole seven-point, whatever it is, acre parcel? When when a good portion of that parcel already has buildings and other facilities located on it?
Yeah, it's a good point. I think the best way to frame it is if you look at this like a framed, phased project where the commercial component came in before the residential component. That's how I would look at this, just to put it in terms of understanding how the allocation process is working. We have to allocate units based on the general plan land use map, which if we change it to commercial residential, would have a 30 unit per acre maximum capacity. And that applies to the entire site. So we're not just changing one portion. We're not parcelling this off in two separate lots. Partially because the project, if it's built, would operate and function as one development site. You'd have shared parking, shared circulation, drive aisles, and you have typical planning techniques that are accompanying a new development. So if you if you look at it like a phased project, I think is the best way to frame it, that the commercial did come first and the residential is just following after. So it's a, effectively, it's called a horizontal mixed use project.
So the logic of it is, what is the logic of it? When quite a bit of the ground is already occupied? In other words, if you needed that land for, say, parking, you wouldn't be there. I mean, can't you carry this to an extreme where it would not work if you have other uses already on the ground?
If you have more uses, more development, then the site would be squeezed to a point where it wouldn't make sense to build anything, right? So that could happen hypothetically. I think what we're doing here is Measure E is based on our general plan land use map. So all the units that are in the measuring capacity are based on individual parcels which have a specific density, which a few years back went through an exercise of reconciling our projects that were underutilized and adding units to this measuring capacity. And now that's what we're taking from at this point. So we have measure units in the bank, so to speak, and we can assign them based on a specific project. In this case, we do have to base it off the entire project site. It's a, the entire project site is what's on the land use map.
Okay, well, seems a little illogical, but you know, I guess you know. Has the developer considered anything besides apartments? Has he ever spoken to you about perhaps having condos for sale there instead of?
Mr. Jones, we can actually have Mr. Caruso address your questions. I believe he is standing by right now, and he would be the first one to speak in this application. He is the applicant and therefore gets a few minutes to address this. Would that be okay, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I'd love to hear from him.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Caruso.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We do, thank you.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you for your time this evening. 15 years ago, we opened up the lakes. It's amazing how quickly that has gone by. But we have been very proud of the lake's development, and we're certainly very proud of being a member of this community. I really started my career, for the most part, in Thousand Oaks with building the Village of Moore Park and then going on to the promenade at Westlake and then the lakes. So I have a great love for the city and the community. With this project, we have an opportunity to really fulfill the original mission of this project, which was to give a lot of life and energy to the core downtown, to energize the street, to make downtown more walkable. And the lakes has been, and has been, and is, one of the most beautiful projects that we built. It was in great partnership with the city. But again, to what's been said tonight, there's more that can be done, and we're excited to do that. In terms of revisiting the development agreement, we're certainly willing and open to do that. We think this is an appropriate time to be doing that through this process. And again, eager to find a win-win solution, as was mentioned. I also am eager to get back out when it is safe to do, or via Zoom, and meeting with everybody in the city, the community, groups that are interested and care about this wonderful town. We always want to do what's right by the city and for the community. And even during the pandemic, when retail and restaurants were closed, as you know, we very proudly kept our properties open so that they could be walked through, the lights on, the music on, and perfectly maintained and safe. So we always want to do the right thing. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and sit down with your team. I'm grateful to the planning department and Mr. Kearns for the thorough presentation tonight. We know this is very much in the early stage of working through a lot of issues that we've got to solve, including those that were raised, parking and other things. And I'm going to leave those fine details to my very capable team, Bryce Ross, who is here, and Chris Robertson, to answer all the questions that you have. But I'm eager and excited. This is a major, if not the number-one priority for our company. And we are just excited as can be to have the opportunity to at least talk about another project in the great city of Thousand Oaks. So with that, if you don't mind, I'll turn it back over to you and make Bryce and Chris available to answer all the particulars, which they are much more versed in than I am, and will handle everything from here on. Unless there's a particular question for me, I'm happy, obviously, to answer it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caruso. And yes, you have your team standing by as well for any questions or concerns that were raised. Did you want to address them now before I go to additional questions from council members? We had the issue of parking and then height, I believe.
I'm going to turn it over to Bryce and Chris. I'll turn my screen off and I'll sit back and listen. So thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. So who would like to take that on, these two issues that were raised, height and parking? Chris, or Bryce, or Ben?
Good evening, Mayor. Chris Robertson, Vice President of Planning, Government, and Community Relations for Caruso. If it's agreeable to you, we had prepared a few slides that we'd like to share and make a few opening remarks. And then, again, if it's agreeable to you, we can get into some of the more granular details.
Absolutely. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council and staff. As Rick had shared, we're very pleased to be here tonight and talking about the future of the lakes property in Thousand Oaks. I do have a brief presentation I'd like to share, so I'm going to put that up on the screen.
And Mr. Ross, if you could raise the audio level, that would be great. Right now, your audio level seems a little low.
Does that sound better to you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Caruso has been a long-established and trusted community partner in the city of Thousand Oaks. It's coming up on nearly three decades now. We know that when the thoughts and ideas of the community, residents, and civic leaders are embodied into the vision of any proposal, that it will result in being beloved and enjoyed by the community and adding joy to people's lives. That's a prime example of the two-and-a-half-acre park at the lake at Thousand Oaks, which does just that every day. The park is beautifully, is a beautiful community benefit that in many ways has become the heart of the community and is loved by families throughout the community. One of Caruso's leading principles is that, is to ensure that we always have the community and its residents at the top of our minds. It all starts with the conversation for us. Here, as we always do, Caruso will conduct a comprehensive community outreach and engagement program prior to presenting a formal redevelopment proposal. It's paramount to our process that we provide a platform to everyone involved. Numerous meetings will help us achieve an even clearer perspective on how to best serve the public, including intimate conversations over Zoom and larger-town hall-type meetings over Zoom as well. Only after we establish a solid understanding of the desires of the Thousand Oaks community will we begin to put a proposal together. Caruso's partnership with the community in the city of Thousand Oaks continues to grow. We host and operate dozens of family-friendly community events over our properties in the city every year, from movies in the park and live concerts in the park, and holiday events, including the annual ice skating rink, our tree lighting, and Santa's cottage, all of which were born from our community engagement process. We are very excited to share with you that we also work closely with T.O. Arts and just last weekend partnered to host their Highway Stars Drive-In Concert Event at the lakes, obviously in a very safe, COVID-friendly way. We are very much looking forward to embarking upon our community outreach process for the proposed residences at the lakes of Thousand Oaks. And we know that the best thoughts and ideas will come directly from the community and stakeholders. As we know, if we incorporate those ideas, that the ultimate project will bring joy and benefit to the lives of the residents of the city of Thousand Oaks. And with that, I will turn it over to Chris Robertson, who also has some remarks to share.
Thank you, Bryce. Good evening again, Mayor, council members. I'd just like to wrap up with a few key points. When we partnered with the city to develop the lakes back in 2004, we shared a common vision for the future of Thousand Oaks Boulevard as a thriving downtown center with a civic center as the anchor. We, like the city, remain committed to that vision today. As Mr. Kearns pointed out, the site has always contemplated more development, but what that looks like has evolved over time. We know that the city needs housing, and we believe the addition of residential units at the lakes will help to implement a number of important city policies. To begin with, in 2017, the Economic Development Strategic Plan emphasized the need for housing as a key strategy to attract and retain employers. We know the new generation of employees the city is striving to attract and retain is looking for housing that's more walkable, with access to retail, restaurants, open space, and entertainment. We believe this is a step towards implementing the strategic plan. Next, in 2018, as staff mentioned, the Downtown Core Master Plan, the city's blueprint for creating an active downtown, underscored that the surface parking lot behind the lakes was underutilized and highlighted that its redevelopment could play a catalytic role in the creation of a successful downtown. We believe that this is also a step towards implementing the Downtown Master Plan. Finally, in 2019, with the Civic Arts Plaza Master Plan, the city chose a plan geared towards creating a more connected and economically sustainable place of gathering with the goal of creating an active town square. And we commit to you that if we're given the opportunity to proceed with an application, the project will be designed with community and city input to ensure it's compatible with and complements the concept endorsed by council. As you know, the city is in the process of updating its general plan to comply with state requirements. We would appreciate the opportunity to work together to move the city towards meeting its housing goals. And we are absolutely committed to working with the city and the community to integrate affordable housing into the project as we prepare to revisit the development agreement. We are absolutely incredibly excited to reengage with the community of Thousand Oaks, which again, is a city we believe strongly in. We'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. We look forward to next steps. And of course, we're available for any questions in whatever format Mayor and council prefers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we will go to Mayor Protem Bob Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thanks so much for coming out tonight and helping us see what your vision is. The buildings that you currently have in town, I think, are, gosh, are probably closing in on 25 years old now or so. They still look fresh, and I appreciate the public art that has been put in by Caruso. They are part of the community now, and I look forward to another development within our community that rises to that level of involvement on your part and your level of taste that you bring to most of your developments. So with that said, I've got a couple of comments, really. Just looking at the plot plan of the property out in the back of the parking lot and everything, how are you going to make the connection between your current property and the property to the west there, our civic center? How is that going to interface together, rather than just walk across a large parking lot?
Yes, great question, Councilmember Engler. We are, it should council let us move forward with an application. We're ready to start a robust community outreach process. We'd like to engage with the community to hear their thoughts, what they need, what they'd like to see there. We'd also like to work closely with the city and the Civic Arts Plaza Master Plan Committee to see what kind of ideas we might come up with. But we are absolutely committed to making sure that redevelopment is walkable. That's a key, that's a key point of our redevelopment efforts, making sure that Thousand Oaks Boulevard is walkable, pedestrian-friendly, vibrant. And so those are, those are some of the things that we hope to work on as we move through the development process and the community outreach process.
And then you mentioned, or actually the staff mentioned, that you were going to be exceeding, or at least meeting, green building codes and standards. Have you given any thought to exceeding those and going for lead-type building? Or really going as far as you can on the environmental side of things?
That's something we're absolutely open to having a discussion about. As you know, the green building code is very cumbersome with all the updates that have currently been included. And it's close to lead standard, so the building will be sustainable. And those will be part of the community discussions that we have as we move forward in the process.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. And I look forward to seeing what you have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? Looking for any hands?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, I like the idea of going forward with the project. I'd like, when we get to the stage of, excuse me, of actually getting in more detail is what is going to be developed, I would like to speak to the owner about the idea of perhaps of having fewer units and having them be condos rather than apartments. And I don't know if that has entered into his thinking up to this point or not. I'm also concerned, as was brought up by Councilman McNamie, about the number of cars that would be associated if you build it out to the maximum that you could build it. But I really like the idea of redoing the agreement because without casting aspersions on anybody in the past, I don't think it was a very good agreement. And I'd like to see that modified to the benefit of both the developer and the city. So with all this in mind, I would like to have it move forward.
Well, Mr. Jones, we have 25 speakers still to hear from before we can discuss anything else.
May I finish my sentence?
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
I don't mean to monopolize the conversation. I'd just like to say that I look forward to making a new agreement and to having the city be an equal partner in deciding what is going to be there in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't sure whether you were ready to make a motion, which is why I brought up the 25 speakers that we have. Didn't mean to interrupt. My apologies. I just wanted to find out from staff, I'm sorry, not from city staff, but from Caruso staff, the Mr. Ross, or Howell, or Ms. Robertson, what can you tell us right now about parking and height concerns, if anything? Because those issues will be, will obviously be concerns for residents, or are concerns for residents.
We definitely understand that those are important and sensitive issues. And at this point, it would be premature to address them, but we definitely understand them as sensitive issues. And as we process forward with our community outreach, we'll be collecting a lot of different information on that and look forward to sharing the results and some of the thoughts and conversations back with staff and with the council as we move forward.
And then the other issue that was brought up is ownership versus rental. Is that something that would be on the table as well?
We are open-minded. At this point in the process, our job is to listen, is to hear from the community. I think Councilman Jones's thought is definitely a point that we're hearing. And we want to make sure that we give a broad opportunity for the community to provide their input before we make any kind of recommendations or decisions as we proceed forward.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to our first speaker, and we, as I said, have, I believe, 25 of them. First one will be, and they will all be joining us via video, Amy Commons, followed by Tim Hagel, and then Scott Patterson.
Madam Mayor, I believe the first speaker, the listed change is Tim Hagel.
Excellent. Our former police chief, Tim Hagel. Hello.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Oh, thank you. Hey, listen, I just, it's an honor for me to be here tonight. This is close to home for me, as you know, being born and raised here, starting 60 years ago, and having the honor to be the former chief of police. I know how important it is for the city to provide a pathway for workforce housing. You know, later, the decision of that's condos or apartments or some sort of mix, that's going to be for the council and the experts. But in July this year, 26 brand-new doctors, brand-new, out of medical school, will be moving to Thousand Oaks. And they're going to be, begin the rigors at Los Robles Hospital as a new teaching hospital. They're going to do their time there. That number's going to grow over the years and could triple. And when you're looking at 25 to 75 new doctors, the key is to get them, once they finish their residency, to stay in the Cano Valley. And the only way we're going to be able to do that is with the appealing mixed use and a pathway for housing. Caruso Properties has been a long partner of the Cano. I think they mentioned that close to 16 years ago partnering with the city. And they really have touched virtually every nonprofit in the Cano Valley. To say that they are socially invested in our community can't even begin to say. Every time you turn your back, you see the impacts and the lives that they change and how beneficial they are for the community. They're on so many boards, including support for virtually everybody, including the Police Foundation. Tonight is a conceptual process, and I believe that their past performance and their outstanding investment in our community and the future of everybody should be considered holy. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Scott Patterson, followed by Rosanna Guerra.
Thank you, council, for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. My name is Scott Patterson. I'm 31 years old, and I graduated from Westlake High School in 2008, if I did my math correctly. I'm lucky enough to live in Thousand Oaks now. I'm a commercial real estate broker here in the area. And I couldn't help but notice, as I drive by the lakes, that, to no fault of Caruso Company, it's quite vacant right now. And there's a lot going on in the world that's causing that to happen. And as a commercial real estate broker, my clients are businesses, small and large. And one of the key things that these businesses ask me when we're trying to find a location is, where are the employees going to live? And with office building vacancy really, really high in Thousand Oaks, last I checked, it was about 16%. And that's before COVID. We're going to need to fill these spaces. And these employees are going to have to live somewhere. We want them living here, and we want them earning their money in Thousand Oaks, and we want them spending their money in Thousand Oaks. I think that lakes is a great spot for apartment building. It's a big old parking lot. It's a big old parking lot and I've never in my life had trouble finding a parking spot in the city of Thousand Oaks, which is great. And I hope that it continues that way. I don't see that being an issue, but I trust that that will be perfectly vetted. I say let's be proactive about approving high-quality new developments like Caruso has a track record of doing. And let's not wait for the state to mandate that these projects get done and get our backs against the wall and have to be forced to create something that we don't all want. I think this is a great project and I think it's a great place to put it.
Thank you. Next up, Roseanne Guerra, followed by Delaney Rodriguez and John Irwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. The last time that I came before City Council, I proposed the question, who are we building for? And my question was in the hopes that City Council enact a framework when judging housing proposals. More apartments in a mixed-use setting that abut where their backyard is the freeway has concerns for me. Are there no projects in our suburban area where they don't abut the freeway? My hopes would be for the city to create a mixed-use location that would be inclusive to working families, the disabled and seniors. The city needs more housing, absolutely. There's no question about that. But we need a variety of affordable housing and affordable condos and townhomes and apartments that are inclusive to our senior and disabled and working families population. According to the Brookings Institute, demographic trends likely to be confirmed by the results of the 2020 U.S. Census include a more pronounced aging population along with decreasing geographical mobility. The U.S. Census Bureau data leading up to the 2020 count said from 2010 to 2020, the population over age 55 increased 27% compared with 1.3% for the population under age 55, suggesting increases in the over-55 crowd that can be expected in all states and metro areas and most counties. We need more variety of housing for our aging population in order to keep them here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Something for the city to consider is funding from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or ACD. They have awarded 276 grants and loans totaling more than $1.2 billion in projects. More creative options need to be explored in order to realize the goal of inclusivity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Delaney Rodriguez, followed by John Irwin. And after John Irwin, we have Adam Haverstock. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Delaney Rodriguez. I currently live in Orange County, but I grew up in Ventura County. And both my husband and I graduated from Cal Lutheran and we started our careers in Thousand Oaks. We're both 30 years old and we have owned a home previously. We choose to live now in an apartment because where we live in Orange County is close to the amenities that we want at this stage of our lives. There's microbreweries within walking distance, entertainment venues, movie theaters, shopping for groceries we can walk to. When we left Thousand Oaks, this type of housing was not available. It wasn't feasible for us and the entertainment and retail options were extremely limited. Our families are still in Ventura County and someday we would like to move back to be with them. The proposal you have been talking about tonight is exactly the kind of place where we might want to live. If the Boulevard ever became a place that was lively with entertainment, restaurants, coffee shops that we could walk to, that would be a real draw for us to return. So I just wanted to join tonight to give that perspective.
Thank you. Next, John Irwin, then Adam Haverstock and then Kat Selm. Good evening.
Hi, thanks Mayor and council members. My name's John Irwin. I've lived in Thousand Oaks with my wife and kids for 25 years now. We're fortunate enough to raise all three of them here. They all went to Thousand Oaks High School. City's been a great place to live and raise a family. And one of the ways I chose to give back to the community was to get involved at Cal Lutheran University. I've been on the Board of Regents for the last 11 years. One thing that's exciting about that is it's, CLU's always had a strong partnership with the city and local organizations. They're out in the community constantly. One project that I got to witness early on, which was a sign of creativity in this partnership, was the building of the community pool at Cal Lutheran, where it was a partnership between Cal Lutheran, CRPD. And you now have the CRPD community pool as a great spot on the north campus. And as president of the local swim club at the time, it was great to see the benefit that brought to the kids in the community. This forms the basis of what's really been a great town-and-gallon partnership between CLU and the city of Thousand Oaks. And as we look at the landscape now, higher education's facing some challenges, especially in the time of COVID. We were fortunate for the last 10 years to have Dr. Kimball lead the university and we recently brought on Dr. Lori Varlata as our new president. Phenomenal transformative leader that'll continue the tradition of partnering with the city. The ability to attract faculty and staff to the university, it's really essential. It's critical to the success and continued strength of the university. And when faculty are making decisions about potential job opportunities, over 75% of them state that cost and proximity of housing to the university is either very important or important to their decision to accept the job. So having these housing options nearby, entertainment, I think it makes reviewing concepts like this one at the lakes for residential housing, housing for workforce, to support the university is great. I also think seeing Caruso and how he's engaged the community and taken community input is a great step in the right direction to help the city move forward and look at a great option for the university and really for other businesses to come to town. Thanks and have a great evening everybody.
Thank you. Adam Haverstock, followed by Kat Selm and then Steve Bertram. Hello.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Adam Haverstock and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the motion allocating housing units to the proposed project at the lakes. My comments tonight will probably sound familiar. I spoke at the last council meeting in favor of the Mill Creek pre-screen that you all approved two weeks ago and I provided very similar comments. In short, Thousand Oaks needs more workforce housing. I'm sure that you are all aware of Senate Bill 330. It is also known as the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. In SB 330, the state legislature declared a housing supply crisis in the state of California, noting that the state of California ranks 49th out of 50 states in housing units per capita as of 2018. I want to repeat that real quick. We are 49th out of 50 states in housing units per capita. So that's where we stand. California needs to build 180,000 additional homes per year just to keep up with population growth. And Governor Newsom has called for an additional 3.5 million homes to be built statewide over the next seven years. That's 500,000 a year. Specifically here in Thousand Oaks, the Southern California Association of Governments, in their most recent Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocations, determined that Thousand Oaks needs to build 2,616 housing units in the next eight years. This project will go a long way to helping Thousand Oaks meet its required allocation of housing units. It will also help Thousand Oaks bring down the cost of housing for young professionals, the young professionals that we want to live in our city and take part in our growing biotechnology hub. Please vote yes on tonight's pre-screen motion to allow units to the lakes, to allocate units to the lakes and allow them to move forward with the application process. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat Selm, followed by Steve Bertram and then Roseanne Witt. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Kat Selm and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. I have several questions about this project, questions that the applicant says will be answered if they receive the green light tonight to proceed with a formal development review process. However, I think it would be beneficial for the council to ask these questions tonight as I'd like to better understand the applicant's proposal for allocating affordable units and how they're going to protect residents from the air pollution of living right next to the 101 freeway, as well as what other energy-saving and sustainable building measures that may be included in the project. I'd also like to see the council request the applicant exceeds California's current building energy efficiency standards and require this applicant and all others to go all-electric with no new gas hookups. You've heard it before from TO residents here at city council meetings on these new development projects. We do not want buildings to be out of step with our environmental reality. Allowing gas connections in new building projects is shortsighted, unnecessarily costly and harmful for our health. It's a waste of time and money to include something that is so certain to become obsolete. Whether that be in the 2022 CEC code cycle, the 2025 cycle, reach codes adopted by the city or by adopting the statewide goals of retrofitting existing infrastructure for zero net energy, the writing is on the wall with gas infrastructure. Getting ahead of this now and looking towards the future will save developers and property owners time and money in the long run. It's the common sense thing to do. So thank you for hearing my comments tonight and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Bertram. You're next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. My name is Steve Bertram. I'm the Chief People Officer for Atara Biotherapeutics, based in Newberry Park, as well as a member of the board for the Cano Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight in support of the project that's being proposed at the lakes and full support for advancing it to further study. Atara, as many of you know, is a rapidly expanding biotech company here in the Cano Valley and one of many companies that is currently setting up shop, if you will, within the Cano Valley in the life sciences area. Our staff is typically comprised of biologists, engineers, scientists, highly educated individuals in the STEM fields. We recruit people nationally to the Thousand Oaks area and we have a lot to offer in this community for people joining Atara and other companies like ours. When they come, they're looking for a variety of things. They're looking for jobs, they're looking for outdoor opportunities, they're looking for entertainment and they're looking for housing. And if I go through the list, Thousand Oaks is fantastic. We have a lot of jobs in this community, high-paying physicians. I was really happy to hear from Police Chief Hagel about what the hospital is doing. That's great news for us, great jobs. In terms of outdoor activities, there's abundance of activities in the area relative to entertainment. We have a burgeoning restaurant and entertainment community here in Thousand Oaks that is growing not only in quantity but also in quality. The area that we have a challenge in is housing. And as I recruit people, this is always a challenge, having a mix of housing opportunities. Having had the opportunity to work with the city on the master plan and looking at the lakes area and other development options within the area, I see what's being proposed by Caruso in the lakes as kind of the gem, a really tremendous opportunity for people joining a company like Atara to have another housing option where they can walk to restaurants, they can walk to entertainment venues, they can live in Thousand Oaks and have the quality of life that they're looking for and have a housing option that they can afford. So from my perspective and being a champion of someone who not only wants to attract people into the area but to keep people in the area, an option like this, I think, is extraordinarily valuable. It adds to our quality of life and I think it's worth advancing for consideration by the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bertram. Next up, we have Roseanne Witt, followed by Leann Nielsen and then Jackson Piper. And then also, I'm sorry, also just reminding our speakers to where you live. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and Mr. Caruso. My name is Roseanne. I live in Thousand Oaks. Did you know that 60% of new U.S. home construction is now built to be all-electric? But 95% of California construction still uses fossil gas, which is mostly methane, a climate heating gas 84 times more potent than CO2. Fossil gas-powered buildings added 25% of our state's global heating emissions in 2016. Given that all-electric buildings improve indoor air quality, reduce emissions, increase building safety, are less expensive to build and save on energy costs, mandating all-electric buildings is the single most effective strategy you can take to lower climate risks and protect residents' physical and fiscal health. That solar now generates the cheapest electricity is good news for our community, which now faces wildfires even in January. No wonder 42 California cities have adopted building codes reducing fossil gas reliance. 50 more cities and counties are considering policies for all-electric new construction. The California Energy Commission last updated Title 24 Energy Efficiency Standards in 2019 and is working on the 2022 revision. Burning fossil gas in our buildings for three more years will result in 3 million more tons of climate pollution by 2030 and more than $1 billion of unnecessary spending on new gas connection infrastructure. So over 100 environmental, environmental justice and public health groups, utilities, air districts, local governments and architectural and business associations have all urged the CEC to adopt all-electric. Doing so now, as the state mandates significant housing development, is fiscally wise. It will lower construction and energy costs, increase the supply of affordable housing, avoid the cost of retrofitting obsolete fossil fuel infrastructure down the line and make significant strides towards climate goals. Like the promenade and the lakes, I know Mr. Caruso will design a stylish complex. He has earned a reputation for excellence, which makes him exactly the right person to lead on climate-forward, all-electric construction in TO. The Cano Climate Coalition challenges Mr. Caruso to commit his considerable skills to designing a LEED-certified project featuring energy-efficient windows and insulation, heat-reflected building materials, permeable pavers and a gray water system. Equip it with all-electric appliances, induction cooktops and EV charging stations powered by rooftop solar and wrap it in a park-like setting with abundant native trees for enhanced shade and evapotranspiration. As he's done in the past, we challenge Mr. Caruso to set a new standard for green building in Thousand Oaks. We also remind our city staff and council members of your commitment to designing and constructing new buildings to exceed green building standards.
Ms. Witt, I'm sorry, I've just been told that you're over your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Leann Nielsen, followed by Jackson Piper and then Clint.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Pena and city council members. My name is Leann Nielsen and I live in Simi Valley. I am a board member of TO Arts and I serve as the provost at California Lutheran University. I am joining you tonight to express my support for allowing the proposed development at the lakes to move forward through your process. By allowing the process to move forward, we will all get a chance to evaluate a final proposal and judge its merits. This proposed development could provide significant benefits for the community, for employees and graduates of Cal Lutheran and especially for an arts-focused downtown centered around the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. There are many potential advantages of this project. This development could reinforce the relationship between the lakes and the Civic Arts Plaza properties, which could present new opportunities for public art and special events. The creation of a walkable downtown would help bring needed energy around the Civic Arts Plaza. Renewed enthusiasm in the area could lead to more support of the Performing Arts Center, TO Arts, the resident companies and other arts organizations which use the theaters. TO Arts, the resident companies, and other arts organizations which use the theaters. Nearby residents could be an audience for arts and entertainment at the theaters without a need to drive. Caruso's been a good community partner for the arts, from their participation in the former Thousand Oaks Arts Festival, the city's pop-up arts and music festival, and most recently for TO Arts as a location for drive-in events during the pandemic. Mixed use with close proximity to arts and entertainment can lead to an expansion and diversification of audiences, which is central to the vision of TO Arts, where the arts thrive for all. This project could also be of great value to our employees and graduates at Cal Lutheran. Housing costs are a detractor for recruitment efforts for our faculty and staff. Students graduating from Cal Lutheran have much to offer to this community, but too often our graduates leave the area because of the cost of housing. A mixed-use project could encourage bright, young talent to stay in the area and contribute to the city of Thousand Oaks. I am not endorsing any specific final proposal, nor am I asking you to approve one. I am encouraging you to allow the process to move forward so the community can have a chance to see what a proposal may look like in the future. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight and for your support of Cal Lutheran, TO Arts, and the arts community.
Thank you. Next up, Jackson Piper, followed by Clint, and then Faith Grant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the Thousand Oaks City Council. My name is Jackson Piper. I am a resident of unincorporated Newberry Park, consider Thousand Oaks to be my home community, and I am also a LEED with Ventura County YMB, which is a volunteer organization formed to advocate for more housing and better housing in Ventura County cities and unincorporated counties. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the allocation of these units to the developer for this project. I would prefer that if the 228 units are allocated from the Measure E bank, that the entire 228 units is used in the project. It makes no sense to me to allocate 228 units and then only build 165. However, I do not see that as a, basically, not as a barrier to this project. So, if 165 is all that can be produced, I would still prefer that these units be allocated. I want to further encourage the developer and the city to look at this as an opportunity to use Assembly Bill 2345, which is now in effect as law, under which, providing certain percentages of this development as very low income, low income, moderate income, or a mix, this project could be granted a 50% density bonus, which would allow for the total project to, I believe, reach 342 units. That sounds like a lot, but this is a seven-and-a-half-acre site. That is plenty of room for that amount of units. The outlay from this for affordable housing, which is desperately needed in this city, as I repeatedly said, is that this project would produce around 35 very-low-income units, 54 or 55 low-income units, or 101 moderate-income units for the city's residents. And housing in Thousand Oaks is an issue that's been going on for decades and will probably continue on being a contentious issue for a while, but we need more housing that's affordable to people who have been here, people who want to be here, and also to recognize that housing needs to provide enough, provide housing for people that work full-time at minimum wages if possible. This housing also needs to be sustainable as much as possible, so please also invest in making your buildings green and sustainable. It will pay off in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Clint, no last name, and Faith Grant, followed by Kinsey Flame. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Clint Foltz, and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. If the resolution is adopted, I would like to urge this city to address several issues that will impact the residents of Thousand Oaks. I think it goes without saying that we are in desperate need of affordable housing, but I'm going to say it anyways. Thousand Oaks is in desperate need of affordable housing. Essential workers, the elderly, and young people are often priced out of the area and end up leaving for other cities. In the case of essential workers, many commute from Oxnard in the San Fernando Valley in order to fulfill the lower-wage jobs here in Thousand Oaks, and they do so in passenger cars. This creates more traffic and an abundance of greenhouse gas emissions that contributes directly to climate change. In a study published in the journal Environmental Research on Tuesday, researchers from Harvard University found that exposure to particulate matter from fossil fuel emissions accounted for 18% of total global deaths, almost 1 in 5. That's an estimated 8.7 million deaths that were linked to fossil fuel emissions alone in the year 2018. I urge you to build as much affordable housing as possible, and when you do, adopt REACH codes that go beyond statewide building codes, making sure buildings are all-electric. According to Rachel Golden of the Sierra Club, "There's no pathway to stabilizing the climate without phasing gas out of our homes and buildings. This is a must-do for the climate and a livable planet." I'd also like to add that The Lancet reported in 1996 that the use of domestic gas appliances, particularly gas stoves, was linked to increased asthma, respiratory illness, and impaired lung function. So, you have the opportunity to lead the way, turn off the gas, and allow hard-working people to live and thrive in Thousand Oaks. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Up next, Faith Grant, followed by Kinsey Flame, and Kinsey will be joining us via telephone, and then Danielle Borgia. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Faith Grant. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I want to thank the developer for agreeing to reach out to the community to get feedback if this project gets the green light to move forward. I think the developer will be aware of the current CEAP that's in progress, and with that regard, the applicant will be required to meet the minimum building standards required by the California Green Building Codes. I'm asking that the developer comply with California Energy Commission 2022 Code and require the entire building to be all-electric-ready and without gas hookups. All-electric buildings improve indoor air quality and building safety, they lower construction and energy costs, and they reduce greenhouse pollutions. Energy-efficient windows and insulation and cool building materials should be incorporated as well. California has over 50 cities and counties across the state that are considering or putting policies in place to support all-electric new construction. They are motivated by the changing climate, worsening air pollution, escalating gas rates, and safety risks from gas. Let's put the city of Thousand Oaks on that list. And since half of the greenhouse gases produced in Thousand Oaks are generated by cars, I strongly urge electric vehicle charging stations for every unit so that many apartment owners can acquire electric vehicles and participate in reducing emissions. I'm pleased that the existing oak trees are being protected, but I also recommend more gardens, vegetation, and tree cover. And lastly, this project must make available more units available for low-income residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, via telephone, is Kinsey Flame, followed by Danielle Borgia, and then James Connor. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill Delapena, council members, and city staff. My name is Kinsey Flame. I appreciate the opportunity to give you my thoughts. I'm a mom and a business owner in our community. Our family lives in the Newberry Park area. My two businesses depend on the growth of our community and the ability for new, growing families to move here. My husband and I own a children's martial arts center, and I am the owner of Moms of Cano Valley. Moms of Cano Valley is where you can find out what that loud boom was at 11 o'clock last night, probably the latest gossip, maybe sell your kids stuff, but most importantly, you can find out what our community needs. We are 22,000 moms strong with a lot to say and a lot of opinions. I can confirm that we absolutely need multifamily housing. We have hundreds of posts per week from moms in our area looking for affordable housing. As an extremely involved and engaged community member and a member of our Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, I am aware of how critical multifamily housing is to our workforce, and when married with shopping, dining, and entertainment, it will get our community out of their cars, off the freeway, and stop the sales tax leakage to other communities. Caruso has been a strong community partner and is a good-faith bet because of their track record of commitment and their history of encouraging their executives to participate on the boards of dozens of causes to support all aspects of Thousand Oaks. Caruso has continued to create events that our families look forward to. His properties are where some community events happen that our children will remember for years to come: concerts, art festivals, kids' clubs, Breathless with the Bunny, and so much more. Caruso and his team bought the beautiful Lakes Park area to the city, its amenities, maintenance, and programming for community events at their expense. Our family loves to spend time at the lakes, especially during COVID-19. The lakes is always well-kept, the grounds are beautiful, and it's family-friendly. This area is located in a great spot with walking distance to restaurants, grocery stores, schools, and many local businesses. I ask the council to consider allowing and encourage Caruso to participate in this application process. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. Next up, Danielle Borgia, followed by James Connor, and then Max Guinness.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Danielle Borgia, Thousand Oaks resident and President/CEO of the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce. It represents over 900 businesses in the communities of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, and Agora Hills. The Board of Directors for the Chamber would like to express our support for the proposed allocation of units for Caruso for this mixed-use project. Caruso has a proven track record of quality developments in the city, and the additional housing to this center will create much-needed workforce housing for our major employers to recruit and retain the local talent we need to make our community thrive. One of our largest employers in Thousand Oaks, Amgen, with over 5,000 employees, agrees. They stated, "As a large recruiter of top talent from around the world and across multiple disciplines, a vital factor in deciding where to locate Amgen offices is the availability of a wide variety of housing, entertainment, and recreation options for our employees. Mixed-use housing provides opportunities for all levels of employment, including those wanting to put down roots in our wonderful community. We also strive to be located in communities in which inclusiveness is valued and our team members can feel a true sense of belonging regardless of backgrounds." I would like to remind you that this employer has witnessed firsthand the growth of our community over the last 40 years, establishing their biotechnology headquarters in what was then small-town Thousand Oaks. And today, Amgen says, "They are proud of how Thousand Oaks has grown over the years and supports the community as it continues to grow, and will support innovative projects that make this town a vibrant place for all walks of life from around the world." And Amgen is not the only local biotech in support of mixed-use housing. You also heard remarks this evening from Atara Bio. And honestly, this is just the tip of the iceberg, because the recent investment in our biotech sector will ultimately create thousands of jobs that we all want, and further elevates the importance of additional housing options for these professionals. In addition to our need for housing, projects like this one will create hundreds of good-paying jobs during the construction phase, helping with economic recovery, and will ultimately place more local residents on the boulevard within walking distance to our local restaurants, services, and entertainment. As you all know, this is not a final approval, but merely a pre-screen process to assess the merits of this project and give the developer initial feedback. There will be ample opportunity to provide feedback along the way to ensure this project meets the needs of Thousand Oaks businesses and residents alike. On behalf of our chamber, I strongly urge you to support this project's preapproval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have James Connor, followed by Max Guinness, and then Sean Maradian. And again, if you would please mention where you live. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. My name is James Connor. I, along with my wife, have resided in Thousand Oaks for over 25 years. We've raised our three children here. They've gone to the schools. We love the community and everything that the community has to offer. I am involved in commercial real estate brokerage, so I have seen firsthand and dealt with companies moving in and out of the area, and definitely, over the course of time that we've lived here, have seen the need to increase the local housing, including affordable housing, primarily for these companies to house their employees. The one thing that I have learned over the course of time living here in this great city is that growth is inevitable, and with the shortage of affordable housing that we are now experiencing, along with the increase in homelessness, I think it's more important than ever that the city address these issues, and here is a golden opportunity, in my opinion, to do just that. The city needs to be cautious as they look at growth. Smart growth is the key, and that is why I'm a big proponent of this project that Rick Caruso and the Caruso Companies is proposing. What I like about the project is the fact that it's on an existing parking lot that's off the boulevard. I like the fact that it would be a great augment to the existing Lakes Retail Center and also to the Civic Plaza Performing Arts Campus, which I believe is in dire need of a residential component to make it a true mixed-use development. I also want to applaud the Caruso Companies for their great projects that they have built in the past, including the promenade, and of course, the lakes. They have an excellent reputation in the community. They're a great community partner, along with having a great relationship with the city, and I really look forward personally to seeing what they would come up with in terms of a design plan for this proposed project. So, as a result of this, I would encourage the city council to vote in favor of allowing the Caruso Companies the opportunity to have their project submitted for review and consideration by the Planning Commission and city council, given the city's affordable housing needs and the opportunity to develop a property like this that is currently a parking lot by a premier developer seems to me to be a great project to get behind. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Max Guinness, followed by Sean Maradian, and then former Mayor Larry Horner, by telephone. Good evening, or hello again.
Hello again. Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Max Guinness. I live in Oxnard. And like Newberry Park resident Jackson Piper, who spoke earlier, I am also a LEED of Ventura County YMB. We are working to end the housing shortage that plagues Ventura County and California more broadly, especially in the high-cost areas like Thousand Oaks. I want to emphasize the importance of approving this project and moving forward as quickly as possible. This is the exact kind of multifamily, dense housing development that we think is critically important to making areas more affordable, more sustainable, more inclusive, and especially if it's replacing a parking lot, that will get even more cars off the road, and if it's in a walkable neighborhood, that'll help people live without getting in their cars and causing carbon emissions, polluting our air, et cetera. I also want to echo Jackson's request to allow higher density, to make use of the full Measure E bank, and also potential density bonuses. This really is a sizable lot that can accommodate more future Thousand Oaks families, including many who, like one of the people who spoke earlier, moved out partially because there is not this kind of housing available in Thousand Oaks. I also wanted to clarify one of the points that was made earlier and really emphasize it, that California, this is a statewide issue, and we are not only the number 49 out of 50 states in terms of housing units per capita, number 50 there is actually Utah, so that's largely driven by their large families. We are number 50 out of 50 in terms of housing units per adult, and we are also number 1 out of 50 in terms of the poverty rate. These are directly linked. There has been extensive research showing that there's a link between housing shortages actually causing poverty as they raise housing costs and make sure that people don't have enough resources to pursue their other needs. So, thank you very much for the time, and I hope you improve this quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sean Maradian, followed by former Mayor Larry Horner. Next up, we have Sean Maradian, followed by former Mayor Larry Horner by telephone, and then Nan Young of Art Trek. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable Council members. My name is Sean Maradian. I'm a lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks and president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. On behalf of our association, we strongly support the application before you this evening. This pre-screen is like none other that you've heard before. We would respectfully consider this the boulevard's application, the residents' application. This project in large part belongs to the taxpayers upon which Mr. Caruso would like to enhance at his expense. The residents of Thousand Oaks would be the direct beneficiaries of any future project. Is Mr. Caruso qualified? I believe the answer is yes. He has an outstanding track record of award-winning developments in our community and throughout Southern California. For over 30 years, he and his executive team have been involved in our community. Mr. Caruso has empowered his senior vice president, Mr. Rick Lemo, to serve on countless community boards and organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, CLU Board of Regents, Rotary Clubs, Los Robles Hospital, the Alliance for the Arts, just to name a few. We should embrace this opportunity to upgrade the lakes to its potential with him and his team. Nearly 20 years ago, prior city councils tried to play developer and reduce the proposed scale and size of the lakes to a quarter of what Mr. Caruso originally had intended to develop. The result has been 20 years of no profit sharing. Many residents, including members of our City Council, have asked for years for the development agreement with Mr. Caruso to be revisited. By granting tonight's allocation, the City Council will have that desired opportunity. As the landowners, the city of Thousand Oaks owes a fiduciary responsibility to its residents and taxpayers not to waste city resources. The current Lakes project is not performing as envisioned by our council 20 years ago. The council has the opportunity to correct that imbalance and get it right tonight. 165 units isn't going to materially change Caruso's portfolio, but it will make a direct impact on the struggling businesses nearby. It will place new residences within footsteps of the Civic Arts Plaza, thus supporting the arts, and it will begin the process of re-envisioning the campus master plan and surrounding areas. At this point before you tonight, there's just a concept. The question is, would we like housing at the lakes? If yes, the city and residents couldn't have a better company to partner with. Based on the overwhelming success of 1710, we know there is demand for each of the proposed units. Toba stands in strong support of the city and the applicant's joint venture to enhance the lakes. You've heard it before, and I'll respectfully say it again: Land is scarce. We cannot afford to waste it. Please support this pre-screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up by telephone, former Mayor Larry Horner, followed by Nan Young, and then Amy Commons. Thank you. Good evening. Do we have Mr. Horner by telephone? It appears we don't. Then I will move on to Nan Young. Hello? Good evening.
Hello. And I'm a Thousand Oaks resident for over 30 years. I am the executive director of Art Trek, so I hope you call. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. I appreciate it. So I want to say that I strongly support the passing of an application for further evaluation and assessment of what seems to be a very exciting next step in developing our beautiful community. I support this rough draft as it is, so to speak. I hope this is just the beginning of smart development to meet our needs here in Thousand Oaks. I love Thousand Oaks. So I think this is fabulous. I think it's fabulous, and I'm going to, so many people have said really what I want to say, I'm going to be concise. It's fabulous because the Caruso construction and design is always good, and the Caruso buildings last forever and are timeless. They'll be good for our town. I think the Caruso buildings will emphasize community, and I think the use of this land will emphasize community. I like saying the word "town center," and I think a town center can be built where the lakes currently exist. Cultural center. I like saying that. I like thinking I have a town center and a cultural center with a plaza, with residents, galleries, events, shops, people walking, which takes us to a walking center, a pedestrian-friendly part of town. More housing, more work opportunities, a place for great events. So I think it all sounds good for us, good land use, and all of that is good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if Mr. Horner will be back on. Probably will take a little bit longer. We will then go to Amy Commons. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Madam Mayor, thank you for having me. My name is Amy Commons, Vice President, Community Employer Relations at Los Robles Health System. I'm a resident of Oak Park. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this conceptual hearing and further planning talks of creative development for multifamily housing in Thousand Oaks. On behalf of Los Robles Health System and as our Board of Trustees board member, Chief Tim Hegel shared with you earlier tonight, we are thrilled to announce that we will be having 26 new residents launching our teaching program starting July 1 of this year. 20 of those residents will be specializing in internal medicine, another six in emergency medicine, launching in conjunction with our graduate medical education program. It's been years in the making and actually was delayed like many other projects due to the pandemic. Studies show that doctors often choose to stay and nurture roots in the city where they do their residency, and we would love nothing more, right? However, affordable housing is a huge component of this equation, and these young residents will continue to grow in other disciplines with our medical practice. So hopefully, that's in our future with seasoned developers like Caruso with thoughtfully designed, inclusive approaches to all of their housing needs. John Irwin mentioned earlier tonight and referenced the talents that we are attracting at CLU, as well as our robust investment in the biotech hub that the city has been driving. We would want all of these bright young minds to live and grow their families right here and thrive in Thousand Oaks like the rest of us. Webster's is certainly being put to the test tonight with their thesaurus when complimenting the Caruso touch. Cities across the country are vying for developers of his caliber and intentions. But tonight, I want to put a face to one of our beloved critical care nurses at Los Robles, Tom Vasco, who has worked in critical care for the past year, delivering the most compassionate care to some of our most critically ill patients with COVID. Tom's last day is tomorrow, February 10. This is Tom and his son. I want to read a letter that he sent to me last night, knowing that I was going to testify tonight. He said, "My family and I recently decided to uproot and move from our beautiful Ventura County, a county where we were born, raised, and plan on raising our children. My siblings, three sons, are all attending the same elementary school, middle school, and high school that he and I attended in our youth. I was hoping to do the same with my son when he became of age, but this proved to be too difficult to obtain despite our household's above-average income. We were faced with the choice of our son attending a great school district and finding a house that we loved and could stay in the rest of our lives. Sadly, we choose to move out of the state in order to obtain both. I will be leaving my nearly eight-year career at Los Robles Hospital, a place that I dreamt of working as a child, a place that I received many stitches throughout my youth, and a place that I trusted to bring my family to during their times of need, now a place where my son was born. I truly hope that one day I can return to this wonderful area and its exceptional beauty, safety, and community members." Tom Vasco. So, you know, we take so much pride in taking care of our youth and taking care of our seniors, and all of them deserve to thrive here. I just don't want to lose them to other cities and certainly to other states. Lastly, I want to thank you for honoring Wilbert Ak at the last council meeting. I hope he too has the opportunity to thrive and stay in Thousand Oaks. I hope that with projects being thoughtfully considered like Caruso Lakes Development and others on the boulevard, we get to welcome Tom and his beautiful family back to Thousand Oaks. On behalf of Los Robles Hospital, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. And yes, Wilbert Ak, first to go to college, and his family lived in an apartment his entire life, and he truly is an inspiring young man, and I'm sure he will do great things. He was the inspiration behind the Community Commitment Award. Next up, we have Larry Horner by telephone. Let's see if we have him this time.
Good evening.
Yes, hello.
I'm Larry. Larry Horner, a 53-year resident of Thousand Oaks and a former mayor and council member for over 60 years. I have thorough knowledge of the need for multiple-family housing in Thousand Oaks, and we've been talking about it for over 40 years, to my knowledge. And now we have an opportunity to address at least a portion of that need by the project that you have before you tonight. I have known Mr. Caruso for about 30 years or so, and he has a renowned reputation for building the best of the best. So rest assured that this project is approved this evening. It will not be something that anybody will be ashamed of, and certainly will be very pleased with the outcome. Mr. Caruso has always been known as the best of the best, and I think that this project that he will be faced with in terms of development will be just exactly that. So I encourage you to approve this project and let it be amongst the other fine projects that he's already built for us in the city. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. A good evening to you as well. Our last speaker is Edmund Sahakian. Would you please also identify where you live? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Ed Sahakian. I'm a resident of Newbury Park, have lived in the community for over 30 years now, was blessed to raise four children here, a couple of which were delivered by a certain OBGYN that you might know, Madam Mayor. I'm speaking on behalf of this project primarily because of my four children. As you've heard from many of the speakers this evening, there's a need for housing for our children. There's a need for housing for people of youth. There's a need to develop appropriately into our marketplaces where we have space to do so. Madam Mayor, I think that you and the council members have done a fantastic job of reaching to developers, and this greenlighting projects, I think, is a brilliant idea in itself. The reason why I speak on behalf of this project is I have heard the other speakers earlier this evening, and I have children who have told me the same thing. They love Thousand Oaks. It's beautiful. If there could be a district where we could walk and go to shops and not have to drive a car, that would be fantastic for us. That's what this project entails. That's what we've looked at, and it meets that guidance that we're looking for, for beautiful housing, easily approachable, easily utilized in our community, where we can have walking districts where people can engage as a community. I fell in love with Thousand Oaks 30 years ago because of the beauty of the community. I've stayed in Thousand Oaks because of the heart of the community. It's a beautiful, vibrant place where people care for one another. And this project helps us to reach out and to be more inclusive of those who can't afford to live in a multimillion-dollar home. They can't afford to buy a house for the first time, but they can be part of our community as a renter, and they can be engaged in our community as a renter. I think that's important for us to remember, is that we are looking for people who want to continue to grow in our communities. This gives us an opportunity to bring some folks on board. Again, the stories that were told tonight were just amazing in terms of, we're losing a doctor, we're losing students in our community, we're losing people who grew up in our communities because they don't feel it reflects them any longer. Let's do something to really make a difference for them. This project really seems to fit right in that wheelhouse. And I applaud the City Council for taking the steps to work with developers, specifically like Mr. Caruso's fantastic project that they put together over the years, but working with all developers to find ways to make things more approachable, more affordable, and more access for our folks in our community and those who want to stay in our communities. For those children who have been born and raised here who want to stay here, they don't want to leave. They don't want to go out of state. They want to be in our community because they love our community. And I would applaud your efforts to move forward with this particular project. And since I'm standing between you and getting out of this last conversation, I'm going to go ahead and thank you all and end my conversation.
Thank you so much. What a wonderful way to end public comments on a high note, on a positive note. Appreciate that. All right. We now have also the rebuttal left for the applicant, so either, I'm looking here, Ms. Robertson or Mr. Ross, you may rebut or address any of the comments that you heard tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I think I'd like to just start by thanking everybody who took time out of their night to come to council. We absolutely appreciate the support and appreciate everyone taking the time to make comments. One thing we heard from a number of community members is an interest in making sure that the building is designed in a sustainable way and incorporates green building features. That's something that we take to heart. We've made lots of notes, and in addition to Mayor Pro-Tim Engler's comments, that's something that we're going to be discussing as we move forward in the process. Other than that, I think we're here for any additional questions that you or council may have.
The, yeah, the comment that I heard the most often is that we need workforce housing and affordable housing. Mr. Caruso isn't really known for affordable housing, so I'm wondering, but you did commit to building some affordable units. Do we know how many units that will be, what percentage it might be, anything? Can you reveal anything to that effect?
We don't know what the distribution would look like or what the percentage set aside would be. We just haven't moved forward in the process far enough to be able to make those commitments. I think it would be premature of us to do so. As we reach out to the community and get more input from them, we'll, you know, we'll be starting to figure out what the bedroom breakdown looks like, what the affordability looks like, what the parking requirements look like, and all of that is going to sculpt the project.
Yeah, we also heard a call for all-electric, no gas, but given that we have so many PSPs happening and rolling blackouts and so forth, and you mentioned LEED certification, are you also considering microgrids or solar energy or anything like that to support this project?
I mean, I think everything's on the table at this point. We're open to having those kinds of discussions as we move forward in the process.
Okay, I'm looking, I don't see any hands up in my little box. Any other hands up?
Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Yes, thank you. I have been impressed by Caruso's commitment to electronic vehicles. If you look, electric vehicles, I should say. If you look at the promenade, there's so many electric vehicle charging stations there. It's amazing. Chris, how many charging stations do you have at the promenade? Do you happen to know the number?
I don't know the number offhand, but we do like to incorporate electric charging stations into our properties. We feel that they're a huge attribute to our guests.
I think they are, and I don't know the number either, but there's got to be at least a dozen or so, and I think they're the fast-charge type as well. So it's a very convenient addition to the promenade, and I'm sure we'll have things like that at this project as well. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Hello, Miss Mayor, Madam Mayor, Bob Engler here.
There you are. Okay, you disappeared from my screen. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm used to that. It's okay. Just a comment on our speakers tonight. Again, I think we had a very, a very good group of speakers who brought a lot of different perspectives to what can be a very nice addition to our downtown area. And I thank everyone who spoke tonight for their comments and their perspectives. In terms of, in terms of my thoughts on the project, like everybody, I'm always impressed by the product that the Caruso affiliates puts out. It's a well-built and well-constructed locations, and I appreciate the hard work that goes into it. I think our speakers tonight reflected some good feedback on affordability of units, of a LEED-type rating for the building. Of course, we have issues with our parking. We've got to make sure our parking is adequate for- we have issues with our parking. We got to make sure our parking is adequate for those things. In terms of the way I look at it, I'm not a builder, and I think the city did make a mistake a few years ago in trying to dictate to a builder what they thought they would be best. But I think in terms of how you're going to approach it, whether it's for sale or for rental, I'm going to trust that you will bring us a project that reflects the current market needs within the city and that that will be reflected in how you come to us in a year or so with your final project. In terms of, I was reading, preparing for this, I was reading some community development articles and books having to do with, a quote that came out was something, "A city should never have growth without adequate planning." This particular project has had at least four plans that apply in that area. The specific Plan 11, the Civic Arts Development that came out in the late or early '90s. We've had the SB 20 Boulevard Plan that is also affecting this area, the Downtown Core Plan that we passed a year or two ago, and most recently, the Campus Master Plan as part of that. This project, in my opinion, dovetails very well into how all those will be knitted together. So I have high hopes for this project, and I look forward to seeing a project that will accomplish all that we've asked for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My thoughts on this project is that Mr. Caruso and his team have repeatedly done quality projects that come down the theme route, again, as a Disney-esque type approach to allow people to enter into a new world every time they go into one of their building and construction and development projects, which is a unique aspect to their company, which makes it so appealing. They've done great projects here in Thousand Oaks, as well as other parts such as Glendale, Pacific Palisades, and The Grove. So I look forward to what they have to offer here. Their project also offers increased city tax revenue from the residents there at the apartment complex that will utilize, hopefully, the downtown location, whether it be directly at the lakes with all their restaurants and retail stores. There will also be a renegotiated contract here with a, let's just say, a poor agreement that was reached years ago that moved this project forward to where it is right now, that does not allow both Mr. Caruso and his team, as well as the city, to see the true manifestation of what it could be. And I hope that this will, in the course of negotiations, bring it around to something that works for everybody. Their desire to reduce greenhouse gases, I applaud them for their effort and look for every opportunity to do so. We get increased, enhanced value to the city by bringing such a beautiful project when it is finally done to the location, which enhances the city and what we have to offer. That said, again, the disadvantages is that right now we have inadequate footprint of the current retail and restaurant space that does not make it profitable for both the city as well as Mr. Caruso's company. And that's a shame. I don't know if I would have moved that forward, but what's been done is now done, and let's go back and fix it, do a better arrangement for everyone. This will create increased traffic on both Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Cano School Road, which needs to be addressed, and that will come out in the process. The apartments are near the freeway. Again, from a health perspective, not the greatest in the world, but that's up to the free market for people who want to live there. That's their choice if they want to live next to the freeway. I, as a councilman, am not going to say whether they should or should not live there. That's their choice. Parking, again, we talked about that. Right now, we're looking at approximately over three football-field-long cars that need to find adequate parking. The challenge is, is if Mr. Caruso moves forward with the project to address that state-mandated allocation of 1.6 cars for every one bedroom, that would check the box, as the city would say, and the state would allow. However, that's going to be a challenge where we're going to put these other cars, so that way it does not impact the streets around the City Hall area. And that's one where if you increase the parking, that's going to reduce the profit margin for the building, and I'm hoping there's a balance that will occur there for Mr. Caruso and his team to address that issue, to go over and above what the state allows as a minimum, but realizing quality of life is more important. And again, I acknowledge that adding more parking is going to reduce the profit margin and what wants to be made there, and I hope there's an answer in there for all of us. So some aspects of this project that will weigh heavily on my final position and vote on moving forward with the final evaluation of it will be things like adequate parking, two, renegotiating the package, because I want a win-win for both the city and Mr. Caruso and his team. What exists right now is not working, and we need to go back and renegotiate it. And there's an answer in here to make it profitable for both the city, the city residents, and Mr. Caruso, who has done, again, beautiful jobs. There's going to be no three-story building on Thousand Oaks Boulevard directly, which, again, I want to get away from the cave feeling. It's going to be back towards the parking lot next to the freeway and the entranceway into the Civic Arts Plaza. So that is one that still allows us to enjoy our beautiful vistas, mountains, and skyline. Traffic analysis needs to be done with the density that's going to be put in there. That, again, will come out in the process. And consideration of other features that Mr. Caruso and his team are well-known for to make it a beautiful-looking project, I am full confidence that that will take place. But that will also weigh in on the final approval, as far as I'm concerned, and that will weigh in on my final decision. I look forward to what comes forth after all this is said and done, as it's gone through the process. I trust what's going to come out from Mr. Caruso's team will be something that we, as a city, will be very proud. I'm delighted that we're looking at apartments as an opportunity here for those that want to get their foothold in Thousand Oaks, but also perhaps save to buy homes that will come available as our population turns over, as they sell homes, either leaving the city-state for retirement purposes or moving on in life's process of passing on. It's one where our community is changing over right now slowly, but it is happening, and the apartments provide that opportunity for them to get a foothold, become part of the community, and continue on to save up to purchase a house. So that said, I look forward to the vote, and I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McNamee. Okay, any other comments? No comments, no questions?
Do we, it's Al.
Hello, Al.
Mayor.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
No, not yet.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I was muted and didn't know it. I would just like to say that I intend to support the project. One of the main reasons that I am, as I said earlier, I'd like to have a new agreement that would be beneficial to both the developer and the city. And I'm interested in some of the comments tonight, that if we do this and do that. I'd just like to say that we have 130,000 residents here, and that we need to, in our deliberation and in our decisions, we need, and I'm sure the other council members do this and agree with this, you know, the entire community. I'm looking at a document that is 51 years old, and if I could just read for a moment, here are some points that were made in that year, "to enhance and preserve the spaciousness and attractiveness of the Cano Valley, to provide adequate and integrated transportation, to have adequate commercial facilities to satisfy the valley's mercantile needs, to further encourage a sense of community in Thousand Oaks, and foster willingness to participate in city affairs, to provide a framework for a planned and unified community with a balance of living, working, shopping, educational, and cultural and recreational facilities." I think we've done a pretty good job up till now, and I'm only saying this because the, I think the worth of the community and the attractiveness and so forth are not accidental. They go back to a long, long time of planning and council following through. Now we're seeing a new dimension, in my opinion. We didn't foresee 50 years ago that we would be having a problem with the price of housing, but we have that now. So we have to adjust to that. And, but I, so I intend to support the project. I think it's a little too dense right now. I'd like to see it less dense. I'd like to see condos as part of it, so people could get a stake. I think it's easier to go to a single-family detached dwelling unit, if someone wishes that. If you have made a stake in a condo, because then you have filled up some equity, and that gives you a source of funds to move on to something else. But I just wanted to say in conclusion that we have to, I believe, have a balance here. And I don't think, and I'm readjusting my thinking a little about doing something in the area of the lakes and the City Hall, but I still have a lot of reservations on density and traffic and the number of cars. But without going any further, I hope that we have a project that comes back that I can support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Adam, you were asking if there was a motion. There is none.
May I make one, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank the Caruso Company for maintaining the lakes in the immaculate condition that it has been over the last 15 years. Because let's face it, this has been a challenging site from day one. Originally, as we have discussed, it was supposed to be a 250,000-square-foot center with a lot of different amenities, and the politics of the time squeezed it down to 48,000 square feet. It's never quite hit critical mass. But to the great credit of the Caruso Company, they persevered with the site. They kept it beautifully. They even opened up an ice skating rink there every year, just like what was agreed upon. So now we have the very unique opportunity of revisiting the lakes through this project and reviving the lakes, actually, I believe, and perhaps hitting that critical mass and having a catalytic event that will spur, I believe, a renaissance of the retail in front of the lakes, and also be a very intrinsic part next to our own campus. We've already invested a lot of time and effort into our Campus Master Plan. We want to build a town square. We want to build an amphitheater. We want to build a main street. And I think Caruso could be a partner in this and really enhance our downtown core and our Campus Master Plan. And I'm impressed with the willingness to the Caruso Company to listen to all our concerns. I'm excited about how this can bolster the arts. Needless to say, our theaters are suffering at the moment. I don't anticipate that forever, but to have a consumer base right next door that can participate in our theaters and all the retail businesses around the area is just incredible, if you ask me. So I think that, I think it's a great opportunity. I'm really looking forward to see what they come up with. And with that, I'll move 9C that we give the units to the Lakes Project.
So your recommendation is to approve Staff Recommendation 1 and 2, correct?
That is correct.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just, I believe it's Recommendation 1.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. Oh, 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 oh. Yes. Recommendation 1, not 2. 2 is denied. Never mind. It's number 1. Sorry about that.
One only.
Yes, one only. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The, I'm the, and I will speak to the motion, I'm the only remnant from the 2004 City Council vote in which the lakes was approved, 2004, on a 3-2 vote. I was, I did not vote for the project because the development agreement at that time really was not to my satisfaction, and it's been bothering me ever since for almost 17 years that we, that the city had entered into an agreement that was really to the city's disadvantage financially. So with this particular opportunity here, I see another opportunity to re-enter into new negotiations that are much fairer to the taxpayers of the city of Thousand Oaks. I do want to say I appreciate that the hospital is hiring medical school graduates to do residencies, but medical school graduates, they leave with up to $200,000 in student loans. And I'm not sure whether with that amount of student debt that they will be able to afford an apartment that will be potentially $3,000 a month or so. Nonetheless, we do have other industries in the area that will be able to afford this, and I do want to give direction for this particular endeavor, which is to really provide a meaningful amount of affordable housing units on this property that is owned by the city and the taxpayers, that you consider not going above any height that will really affect or impact our scenic highway corridor and will preserve the vistas. And all of the other points have already been made regarding traffic and lead certification, the environment, sustainability, and all that. So really, with this, I'm looking forward to entering into a better agreement with the Caruso Company, and I'm sure it will be, whatever comes before us, naturally, a top project. And so with that, the maker of the motion has final comments. Mr. Adam?
No more comments.
No more comments. Okay, then, Madam Clerk, can we please vote?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations. Look forward to seeing you within a year or so with, hopefully, a project that the community will embrace. And with that, we will go to item number 13, the City Manager, Mr. Powers.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña. I know it's been a long evening, so my report on the next meeting is actually very brief. Our next meeting will be two weeks from tonight, on the 23rd of February. We currently have our next Community Commitment Award, and we have yet one more pre-screening, and that will be the project at One Baxter Way from Kennedy Wilson that we will be hearing that evening. That is all we have on the docket for right now, and concludes my final comments.
Excellent. Okay, and with that, we're adjourning our council meeting until February 23rd. Have a happy Valentine's Day weekend. Good night.